Good evening, everybody. Tonight is Wednesday 13th. My name is John Arena. This is the second in our board's review of town budgets. Tonight, after hopefully brief liaison reports and any public comment, we'll continue our discussions on the public library, public safety, fire and emergency services, police, and our casa. I have a couple of opening comments. Some of you may wonder why tonight's meeting is occurring and why, at this point in the calendar. In part because of a desire to respond to comments and in part because we want to develop a much higher level of awareness. The board has asked that these meetings be conducted with heads within the town to present their particulars. The desired outcome is clarity. We hear often in our conversations the term transparency. I believe what we're trying to establish is something slightly different. A clear view of how the budgets are put together and how the organizations that those budgets support dovetail into the organization. Transparency is giving you the phone book. Clarity is giving you the street address with everyone on that road to be able to navigate effectively. Another footnote before we begin is that sitting in tonight as well is our finance committee, both as an observer and as a commenter as to what's presented. With that, I'll ask for liaison reports. I can't imagine there are any. Andrew?
None.
Dan?
None.
Barry?
Nothing.
Clear.
Okay. Bob, any opening comments?
Nothing, all set.
Okay. With that, we'll get right into the topic of the public library.
All right.
Amy?
Can you hear me? Let me know.
Yes. Then comes call to order. Thank you, Peter.
So, first of all, thank you very much for the opportunity. As always, it's...
You may need to pull that mic really close. It's rather quiet. That's for the host.
Okay. How about I turn it on?
Yeah, that would help.
Is that better? Okay. So, thank you, as always, for the opportunity to present some information about the library and I will try for clarity as much as I can. We were given the directive to kind of go over our staffing as it is. It is always, is always a big part of our budget. The Board of Trustees and elected board oversees the library and they direct, I report directly to the Board of Trustees. We have an administrative department that also includes an assistant director and our senior administrative assistant. We have a children's department, reference services. Those are mostly, deal with the front of the house, we call it, the collections, the development and programming. Those two departments address needs of ages zero to five, which we call early literacy, our school age population, teens, adults and elder services. And we come from the back of the house, which is really primarily circulation and our technical services. They deal a lot more with patron accounts, meeting rooms, museum passes, acquisitions and cataloging, processing and interlibrary loan. The FTE discussion, which is always interesting one. We have, right at this moment, we have 20.8 full-time equivalents. That's made up of 29 regular employees and some seasonal pages. Our pages make up about 1.1 to 1.3 FTEs. And they are seasonal because they're often high schoolers. They come in, sometimes they don't work for a few months or they work, you know. So, that number does fluctuate based on those particular seasonal positions. In addition to our regular employees, we have nine substitutes and those are just per diem. And they are used to fill in for illness, vacation, et cetera. I also wanted to point out that we have an average of 20 hours a week of volunteer work that's over a half FTE. So, we do get support from the community and we could not do a lot of the services that we implement. We could not do that without our volunteers. There was also a question about how the fiscal year 19 budget presentation affects the FTE. It is a little different because Sundays aren't actually part of the standard work week. It's an extra hour. But if you had to guesstimate it based on the staffing and the hours, the ask is essentially a .75 FTE, although it's all fulfilled from within the existing staff. I would like to just take a moment to remind you of the library mission and also our requirements. The library provides professional services, trusted resources, cultural and educational programs and a welcoming community space for personal growth, collaboration and respectful discourse. That is our mission. We are required by law to have a standard municipal appropriation requirement. This is a three-year average. And I just bring this up at this point because last year our increase was 1.25 percent. And that's just a point of information so that if you were to have 1.25 percent for three consecutive years, you would not be meeting this standard. It needs to be an average of 2.5 percent over a three-year average. So, we do have a state mandate, a federal mandate there. Due to the size of our community, we are required to be open about 60 hours a week. And the state requires that we have a materials budget allocation and this could be for physical or digital services of 13 percent. I just make a note here that the trustees have a recommendation that this be kept at 14 percent. The materials allocation requirement is based on population size. The sizes are basically 15,000 to 24,999. We're now just over 25. This population group that we're in goes all the way up to 49,999. So, it is sort of a judgment call that we're on the smaller side of the larger communities. So, 14 percent allocation of materials is something that the trustees and I try to work towards each year. So, with the budget summary, the current fiscal year 19 ask is an increase of 6.6 percent. The goal is to restore Sundays that we dropped last year and also to continue the growth of our digital services and our programs. Both of these come through our strategic plan, which runs from fiscal year 16 to fiscal year 21 and it's on file with the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. Our goal, other than that, is to maintain service levels in all other area. We're not trying to grow any other part of our work. The 6.6 percent increase in wages is mostly due to the $44,500 that we would need to run Sundays from September through May from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. This is four hours. And it's basically calculated at Labor Day through Memorial Day. So, it's four hours of service on Sundays and it's for a very specific time. It doesn't include summers. The six point, if you take away that $44,000, the increase in salaries would come right back down to about 3 percent. So, that's what the increase of 6.6 percent is. The increase in expenses is due mostly to directives from our strategic plan, professional development and travel, professional development, travel. It's really important that we be able to continue to learn. Our librarians are teachers and they're instructors. So, we do need to stay on top of what the trends are in learning. Fiscal year 19 action plan, which we've already filed with the state, actually includes programs and initiatives that have to do with short reading, micro learning and flip learning initiatives. So, in order to implement those and use them, we need to understand how to do it. So, our staff needs to continue learning. The other large bump you'll see there is for library supplies and equipment. It's a 10 percent bump. It's really just keeping up with things like the RFID tags and things like that that we need to continue to purchase to maintain our collection. Our collection isn't growing, our physical collection doesn't grow that much, but the materials that we need to maintain it do go up in cost. And that would probably normalize after the first year. There's a bump in our office supplies, which looks like a whole bunch at 33 percent. But I will say this is actually a restoration. Prior to our move to the temporary space at 80 General Way, our supply budget was $7,000. When we moved to 80 General Way, we cut that to $3,000 for a variety of reasons. I don't know that we need to restore it to $7,000, but we do need to restore it a little bit. I think we've done a lot working with the town. We've done with the copiers and our leases and a lot of the other things. We have been able to centralize a lot of that, but there's just still stuff that we need in the library. So, that's pretty much just office supplies. The materials budget goes up according to the salaries and the other expenses. So, that's just required. And the final thing I just want to mention is there's something on the Munis report that says library transportation and it's not transportation. I needed a placeholder for something called library programs. Library programs are not currently funded and I'll talk about that in a little bit. But our programming is a big piece of what we do and that's currently all funded through gifts and donations. That's not funded at all through municipal tax base. So, that's something that we need to really work towards. So, it's a placeholder. It's a new line. I didn't have a programming line to put it in. So, I just grabbed an empty line and threw $5,000 in there. But I'll talk about that a little bit more. So, that's the 6.6 percent increase ask, which leads to, why do we need that? Looking at our trends, it's really wonderful. Last time this year, a little while about January, I was able to tell you sort of on a quarterly basis how we're doing. We'd only opened on October. We now have a full year of data to go by. So, I'm able to compare fiscal, multiple fiscal years. And you'll see in some places I've done fiscal year 2009, fiscal year 13 and fiscal year 17 as comparison. But a brief look at just sort of pre-80 General Way to being open, we are seeing really significant increases. And with the exception of circulation, all of those increases are in double digits. We have the same exact staff and we have a bigger building. So, I just want you to keep that in mind.
And that is, that is all 17 year-to-date against what period?
That's all fiscal year 17 against fiscal year 13.
Great, thank you.
So, 13, was that the last year?
It was the last full year in the building.
Opened up on the old, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, because there were weird cutoff dates because we moved and closed in the middle of fiscal years. Just so you know, and you will see these numbers from fiscal year nine as well. Fiscal year nine was, and these are great numbers, at least broadly, to look at because if you think about the way the economy has been working, fiscal year nine, there were significant, that was actually, started to be actually an increase in library usage because the economy was not as strong. So, there was a lot more use in services. We continue to see growths and you'll see mostly growth in fiscal year 13. And where some libraries may possibly be seeing leveling off of service, we're in general seeing larger increases. One of the things I just really wanted to point out that although our growth in circulation, and I by no means consider circulation to be the end-all, be-all of our business. I think like other businesses, we are device diversified. It's not just circulation of materials. It's not just the books, movies. We have other things that we do. But our circulation has gone up 3 percent over fiscal year 13 numbers. But even more impressive than that, I just wanted to point out that of the 66 public libraries in the state, we're actually 28 in terms of circulation. So, this includes the big guys like Boston Public Library and larger, you know, city libraries and things like that. So, for a community our size to be coming in 28, that's actually quite good.
Is there a story, Amy, in what leads to 3 percent in terms of those categories or is it kind of all blended?
Yeah, a little bit. That I can tell you right now that what gets checked out. We see an increase actually in our print services. So, for those of you who feel that ebooks are taking over the world and that libraries are no longer being used, I might have evidence to the contrary. There is still a big print, very, very heavy use in our print. We see a big drop in DVDs and music CDs. And that's really to be expected. It's one of the reasons we have a service, which I'll show you in a minute, which is about downloadable music and we're looking into streaming services. Just kind of like when we phased out VHS tapes and audio cassette tapes and we phased in the next medium, we do the same thing here. So, 71 percent of our circulation is print. That's children's, teens and adults. 6 percent audio, 16 percent video. Overdrive refers to our audio, our ebooks. So, that's just the term that's used. It's the platform we use. And then we also have actually a surprising number of other things that we circulate that are very popular. Everything from telescopes to the Roomba, Roomba, that will clean your house for you and projectors and laminators and ukuleles and gadgets and gadgets and GoPros and things like that. And that's a pretty popular collection.
Amy, just quickly, so in terms of circulation, we're pretty, we're a busy library.
We're a busy library, yeah.
Relative to other places in the state. Do you compare any of your budget numbers, or the trustees compare any of your budget numbers in terms of, you know, dollars per capita, things like that?
Yes.
Against the peer communities like we do on other things? I've never seen that presented.
Yep.
I don't know if that's behind there somewhere.
I don't have that in the slide, but I do have those numbers.
I'd be curious to see, again, you know, what are we accomplishing with how much we're spending? Reading traditionally accomplishes more by spending less. I'm assuming the library fits in that pattern?
Well...
Especially if we're 28. So, I don't know what we're...
Yeah. I will tell you that some of the libraries that are ahead of us are Wellesley and Concord and Lexington and libraries that actually put quite a bit of money into their libraries and they have endowments and things like that. So, in terms of per capita, I can't tell you exactly what it is, but we're not either terribly high or terribly low.
Okay. But we're terribly busy?
We're terribly busy, yes. But that doesn't mean everybody is very terribly happy being that terribly busy. Just a side note. But it also translates, just for another perspective, that's 133 items that we're touching every single hour. But I don't think circulation is the only way you can ever measure what we do. One of the things you don't see in circulation are our digital services. These are services that are mostly available from the comfort of your own home. The state does provide a certain number of databases, but we, the Reading Public Library, provide for the residents a whole bunch of subscriptions and licensed content from a number of digital service vendors. The newest thing that we've added in last year is full tax, full access to the New York Times. You can go to the New York Times through our portal, put in your library card number and it's just like you're on New York Times and you can do that from home. We also have access, the same thing, type of access, to the Wall Street Journal, although that is limited to being in the building. So, if you're in the building, you can just sit and read the Wall Street Journal online. Our usage in fiscal year 17 was 90,000, over 90,000 electronic uses. They're a little harder to track because when you go to look at the New York Times, you might look at five or six articles. It's one person. It's harder to tell in terms of circulation. You don't have to return that. You look at it, maybe you don't like it. It's a little harder to measure, but that's a lot of usage. We have over 40 digital magazines and one of the highest uses is Consumer Reports. You can figure out which washing machine you want to buy and from the comfort of your own home. We do have a music service, which allows you to download and keep, not just stream, but download and keep any of $7 million, $7 million downloadable music tracks. And we're currently looking into video streaming. So, that would slowly move to replace our physical...
So, that's from home too, the downloading?
That's the goal, yes. That's the goal. There are a few products that try to limit in-house, but we, in general, we tend not to go with those licensing models because they're a little more restrictive. But having said that, we also do blend out Roku's and every DVD and Blu-ray that we buy comes with a digital version of the movie and we download those to the Roku. So, if you check out our Roku, you also comes with a movie library. Just to pitch there.
So, you have Sony up there. So, do you have the whole catalog?
Yeah, it's something, through something called Freegal and they, and they contract with Sony. It's just, they don't have a lot of independents and some other labels, but they have some pretty good music, so. We also added something called My Heritage this year, which works very similar to Ancestry.com. We have a lot of interest in local history and genealogy. Those are very popular as well as learning databases like tutor.com, which allows you to do a one-to-one tour and Learning Express, which is really great for test preparation and things like that. And that's only one-half of the digital services that we provide. We do have 30 public-use computers. We have an annualized usage. I say annualized because it's something we check periodically and then just sort of calculate it out. The average use of, over 11,000 uses of these 30 computers as well as over 70,000 Wi-Fi sessions. So, people come here to check their email, to use the printer, to apply for a job. Not everybody has broadband at home, so sometimes that's exactly what they're coming here for. And obviously, if you run out of ink and your paper is due tomorrow, we're a great place to go to get your report printed out. But having said that, all of this activity leads to more questions. There's a significant increase in the number of reference interactions that we have. It's tough for me to call those reference interactions because the questions that we get are so varied. The questions we get are now more complicated. It's not just, "Do you have this book?" It's, "Do you have this book? Can I get it electronically? Can I put it on my Google Pixel phone or my iPad? I don't know how to. Which app? There's three apps I can use. Which one should I use? My granddaughter just gave me this iPad and I'm really not sure how to download things onto it." So, the interactions that we have with patrons of all ages are quite a bit more extensive. "Can you help me attach my resume to this online job application?" We get questions like that. But more importantly, I think that one of the reasons we see an increase in these reference interactions is because right now, in current August 30th, 2017, your research report indicates that people trust the library. And surprisingly, most Americans and especially millennials feel that libraries help them find reliable and trustworthy information. And so, there's a really big gap between, like you were saying, having the phone book and then finding what you need to, who's on the street that you're looking for. So, 78 percent or 1 in 8 adults feel that public libraries not only help them find reliable information, but also help them learn things. So, I think that's part of the reason why we're seeing such a big jump. People are overwhelmed and they're unsure where to go to and they come to us. So, I think that's wonderful. But we do take questions in person, on phone. We take text and chat questions. We average about 24 questions per hour and then you add that on top of 133 items that we have to touch per hour. We're getting to some very, very busy service desks.
Amy, the change from 13 to 17 is 20 percent. Is it reasonable to say that some, that some of that increase or all of that increase is the sort, you just described, you know, more of the device rather than the meat, than the subject matter itself? Is that a way to think of it or no? You should just think of it as a tossed salad?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I understand what you're asking.
It's 20 percent more in 17 than 13?
Sure.
One, one way to read that is in 17, there's so many more of these things floating around.
Right, right. So, people are just more overwhelmed and they need clarification.
Correct. Is that the, is that one driver?
I think that's one driver. I think the other driver is simply we're a busy building. We're busier and bigger than we were. So, you'll, you know, we'll talk about the number of visitors that we have. We have more people in the building just asking us questions, but we have a higher profile, I guess. So, I do, I do think that there is a lot of confusion and frustration and on the part of people seeking information and wanting to learn. So, and I think that's why they come here, because it's a resource.
Thank you.
Which brings us to visitors. We're up visitors by 24 percent. We're almost, we were almost at about a half, quarter of a million walk-ins last year. We have a lot of people coming into the library. We're open 60 hours a week, roughly 52 weeks a year. It's a couple of holidays that we are closed. But this is a big increase in our foot traffic. So, the sheer management of the building and just, you know, the situational awareness that we need to be aware of what's going on, that's a really huge, that's taken a huge toll on our staff. We're seeing larger groups of kids. So, we have kids and adults, but I was just going to mention there are two things that we do. We bring in every single sixth grader from the district for a tour of the library. So, there's over 300 kids coming into the building over a couple of week period for that. We started doing exam prams last year. We had over 370 kids at our two nights, over two-night period, where the library had extended hours for studying only. You know, that, that is not something where you can just open up the library doors and kind of have a staff member hanging out. Those are, but they're very, very valuable and we've had a lot of great feedback from both of those types of programs. We also increased the service desk. So, what that means, we have, where we normally had a children's desk, two desks on the main floor. We now have a desk on the ground floor that requires staffing. That is both a safety issue, but also just there's enough people in the building that they're, they're answering, regularly answering questions. So, that's 85 visitors per hour and we get, which I still boggles my mind. I'm trying to figure it out and understand it, but we have over 100 new member registrations every month on average. So, sometimes that's 90 and sometimes that's 115 or 120. New library cards issued every month. So, there's people moving out, new people, somebody gets it for their kid. To me, that's an amazing number to think that 100 people are walking in here every month and asking to join the library.
Actually, that, the question I have, obviously, there's a huge spike, you know, the first year that you opened. Do you track it on a monthly basis?
Yes.
And, and so, the question I have is how much of that 24 percent increase would you attribute to the novelty factor? Oh, wow, there's a new library. Let me check it out. And how much of it is, oh, my God, I heard the new library is great and more and more people are actually, so are you seeing the trend month by month going up?
Yes. I do do the trend month by month. If you want to know a little secret on public television, our actual people tracker wasn't really working till quite far into the, into the, into the opening. So, I actually can't accurately tell you how many people came in in October, November, December and January, the first four months we were open, which I believe were busier than any other months we have. So, this is the, the slower periods, the February's and the March. And this is, I say slower, but then we get into summer and we're often slammed during the summertime, believe it or not. It's actually a busier time for us. So, I'm, I don't, I don't think, I think it's a little bit of that, but the numbers aren't really that far off from, from our previous. I think it makes sense that these numbers are probably going to continue on trend, particularly, particularly if we're able to maintain our services. So, if we're dropping services, dropping programs, dropping hours, then no, those, those numbers won't stay there.
But what's not getting tracked in quote-unquote visitors are the folks that would read the New York Times from their living room with their library.
Correct.
So, they're not coming into the library.
Correct. That's only, that's just the foot traffic.
But they're utilizing libraries.
Correct.
So, you know, if there's a way to kind of count those in the tally?
That's the 90,000 electronic uses. But you're right, those are uses that could be, it could be very tricky.
Right, that could come here to read the paper.
You could be checking the paper every day. So, I, yes, but versus like another person. So, but yeah, we do try to capture that, but it is, it's a little bit like putting the fruit in the carts. They're all a little bit different, so.
Another quick follow-up along the same lines. Some of these are non-reading residents, I see.
Absolutely.
Be interesting cut to see the split between reading and non-reading or adjacent towns.
On an individual, just visitor basis, we can't tell that, but we do report to the state all of our circulation that are, that go... We track what items, this is why, you know, circulation is such a big thing because it's easy to check. We track how many items we actually physically send to other libraries throughout the state and actually the United States interlibrary loan, as well as the number that we take in from other libraries. We also specifically track, if you walk into our library with a non-reading library card, we have the number of, and we report that to the state and it's a number that they use to help calculate our state aid, the number of non-reading residents that we're, and out-of-state residents, we get some from Hampshire, that we provide services to in our building. So, the computers track. We are able to give those numbers, but just not this.
I think, so the 109 a month, can you, is it possible that...
Those are almost all reading. Those are almost all reading. Occasionally, we'll get someone from Wakefield, but, but, you know, or nearby. But all we need, if you are not from here, if you're, you know, from Hyannis, and you have a library card in Hyannis, we don't issue you a card. We have reciprocal privileges, so we just enter your card into our system.
I see.
That's not, that's not a new reading card. That's just a, that's just an on-the-fly record.
So 109 is true foot traffic, no prior library card, library experience?
Or, well, could be somebody who lost their library card and forgot it, and has never used it, or something like that. But yes, sometimes they're returning kids from college, who, you know, that kind of thing, but...
Do they actually carry a card?
Or is it on, is an app on the iPhone?
You can use your, you can, we have that availability, but yes, absolutely, we have key cards and full-size cards for your use.
And lastly, regards to the people tracker and the uptick in foot traffic, will any of your remarks speak to kind of situational awareness of the building itself, and where people are, and, you know, just awareness of what's going on inside from the street?
I, I, yes, I was going to touch about that a little bit on the end, and you'll see where I save it today.
All right. That's great. I'll wait. Thank you.
Very briefly, though.
Amy, could I ask you a quick question? First, you, I thought you were not going to call out people who lost their library card.
I'm embarrassed. Sorry.
But you mentioned that summertime is a very busy time. You guys get really slammed in the summertime. So why do you have reduced hours in the summertime?
We actually don't have reduced hours in the summertime. We're open Saturdays on, yes, we've been open Saturdays for quite a while. So we are open sixty hours a week for the entire time. The only hours that we lost, which were just this past year, were Sundays from May, October to May. So...
All right. Thanks.
And that's, the reason is because we're so busy in the summer. So. Meeting rooms, the space has afforded us the wonderful opportunity to become more of a community center. We previously only had two meeting rooms. Now we have more than that. Some of them reserved only for library use, but many of them open to the public. So we've seen an incredible increase in the use of meeting rooms, just because we have more. But more importantly than that, we have almost four hundred community meetings here in the library in fiscal year seventeen, and that is an eleven-month year, because we didn't have any meetings here in September of 2016. This, more, more meetings rooms, we're talking about situational awareness. More meeting rooms is wonderful, and we have had sports registrations and referee coaching kind of seminars. We've had office hours. We've had Seth Moulton here. We have had a piano recital here. The Department of Justice hosted a risk assessment workshop for clinicians here. So we are working with state government, local government. We have, we had Alice training here for all-town employees. We're really, it's great. And it's exhausting. Talk about situat, it's not just a problem for us. We do have technology, and we do books, do room bookings, and there's wonderful programs that we use, and our staff has taken all of this on. It's, it is a drain on our custodial services, which actually is paid for out of facilities. But I will say that, you know, for example, this room had to be broken down entirely. Were two meetings that went on earlier today, and then had to be reset up. So, you know, all the microphones and everything have to put away. Just the sheer management of it, in terms of making sure that the folks who are using the rooms meet the library policies. There's, there's, all, all meeting room rentals are mediated, so someone has to physically look at it and make sure it meets all the criteria. So it is a big drain. It's a wonderful drain to have, but it's, it is a lot of work. And I think it's something that we did not necessarily take into account. We are very careful that when the rooms are not in use, that they are locked. All the program rooms, including the children's program room upstairs, are, don't have good line of sight. So if you're sitting with service desk down there, you can't necessarily see what's going on in here. You can see the hallway, but not in here. So, so it is, it is a great and wonderful resource to have, and it's just been really, really busy.
Where do you think that line goes to in the coming years? That's, that's a hard question to answer, I know. But if you thought about your total capacity and your total use model today, and you just did a quick back of the envelope, do you think it doubles?
I think, I think, I think it could easily increase by a third. I don't think it would double.
Okay.
But I think the problem is, is that, excellent segue, Mr. Arena. The problem is, is that we also had over six hundred programs, or six hundred programs, library programs last year. So the library itself uses these meetings.
I see. It's a fraction of the media.
Quite a bit, right. So, and it's an excellent segue, and I forgot to mention something in the last slide, but I'll try and come back to that. But reading is learning. What do I mean by that? That we had almost eighteen thousand people come to some sort of learning or cultural event at the library last year. That's about seventy percent of our population. I know it's not seventy percent of the actual people, but when you count it out, people in reading want to learn. The world is learning. Seventy-four percent of all adults consider themselves to be lifelong learning, and that lifelong learners, and that's both personal learners, people who are just interested in hobbies, and it's, you know, reading, and gardening, and all those other things. But also, sixty-three percent of adult workers consider, consider themselves lifelong learners, and learning as a requirement to either stay certified, or eligible, or relevant to their job. So we had six hundred programs, we had almost eighteen thousand people in the building. Those are significant numbers. It's fourteen percent, both in the number of programs that we offered, as well as the number of people that were attending them. That, when you're going to ask me how many more programs could we offer, that is at flat capacity. That's actually overcapacity. I mean, I, I am blown away by the fact that we got to offer six hundred programs last year because of the staff that we have. That's a lot of time. We do hire out for instructors, and, and, you know, program providers, and musicians, and things like that. But a large number of those programs are run, are planned and run by our staff. So it's, it's a pretty, it's a pretty big drain.
And Amy, remind us again, obviously, they're all different sizes and capacities, but what are the total number of meeting areas?
I think it depends whether you count this room as one or two.
Got it.
We split it out. So there's three on this floor, if you count this as two. We do use the, we consider the teen space and the studio on the main floor to be, we use those for programs.
Right.
So those are internal use only, although sometimes, sometimes we let people use them. And then there's the children's room on the second floor, and the local history room. So, um, it's about seven.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, to the original ask for five thousand dollars for programming, as I mentioned earlier, the funding for all of our programs and classes are, is external. We rely on the Friends, the Reading Public Library, the Foundation, and other gifts and donations. We also apply for grants and things like that. Our strategic plan, which was based, we did in two thousand, two thousand fifteen, I guess, two thousand fifteen for fiscal year sixteen through twenty-one, included a study, and there was a clear, clear directive for more programs, for more learning opportunities. It's very difficult to, for us to reach this, both through staffing, but also just through the sheer funding of this. I will tell you that five thousand dollars could easily be a drop in the bucket. It's about, I think last year we spent about thirty-eight thousand dollars in program, forty thousand dollars probably was about our estimate. We do try to get grants. We've had grants ranging anywhere from five thousand to twenty thousand dollars for programming. Those are wonderful, wonderful years. But federal grants are getting more scarce. So I think, and the trustees have talked about this actually for a couple of years, I really do think it's time for the town of Reading to at least consider the option of providing some sort of guaranteed base funding for our programs. So I just think that's something to consider.
So Amy, when you say programs, do you mean like the speaker series, a music series?
Exactly.
A cooking class?
I'm not talking about snacks and like, you know, paper bowls. But, yeah, I think definitely we, to get people in here who are knowledgeable at it, I mean, you know, knowledgeable, experienced, and educated, we need to hire people to do some of these things. Even some of the trainings that we do, some of the instruction that we do.
So when you said you had six hundred events, classes, that was funded predominantly by the Friends?
Yep.
And that was, you said forty thousand, fifty thousand?
About forty thousand, obviously.
Plus with the Foundation?
Forty thousand total, I think, is really...
So the five, so let's just say it's five thousand?
Yeah.
Like, what, like, what would that extra, like, get?
That would, that would give...
Higher quality, higher quantity?
Yes. Yes. It would get, I think it would, I defer to the trustees and going back to your, to plan. However, I, I think that there is an opportunity to, quality's a tricky word, but to bring in more outside expertise, which would relieve some of the staffing requirements, to learn how to do 3D printing on the fly, and then present something on that. So, because somebody, they wanted to do that. So we already do rely on outside expertise. We try to bargain ourselves down to the lowest bidder. But that's not always what we want to do, and what we feel is the most responsible way to present the information to the public. And one of the things we do try is make sure that we're, we're providing, if we're providing point of view A, we do try very hard to make sure that we're providing an equal and opposite point of view, or at least a panel of well-balanced kind of information. So now you're like, can we have two speakers? And so it does get up there. So, you know, funding is always going to be a limitation.
So if you wanted to bring in like an author?
Yeah, we do bring in authors.
Is that, is that subsidized through the Friends as well, or is that?
Authors, discussion groups.
They don't come for free, so.
They never come for free. So, if they do, then it's probably something else that they want us to do. So, but it is a really, really big part of what we do. So...
And that forty thousand dollar number, that's the total external support?
I would say it averages, every year, between thirty-eight, you know, like thirty-five and forty-five thousand dollars. It just depends on what kind of year we have. So...
And that's the total pool from external support sources?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
I'm almost done. Give some fire, I really am. So, just a very, the simple ROA calculation, it's really hard to measure the value of libraries. There's a lot of social, and emotional, and developmental things that go on here. But if you look at fiscal year thirteen, that was our, fiscal year seventeen, I'm sorry, that was our budget, one point four million. You take that, and you use a very rough, rough calculator, because by no means it's scientific, but it is a ballpark. If you just look simply at the number of adult print books that we circulated, and you average that the hardcover cost is seventeen dollars, you know you can get it for less, sometimes you pay more, you're talking about a hundred percent return on your investment. Even though some of the people in this room may not ever check out a book, or rent a room here, or attend a program, or ask a question, the residents of Reading are getting over six million dollars' worth of, of service from the library, which I think is a pretty darn good deal.
This is a very interesting way to do it. I've never seen it. You're looking at the opportunity cost of just having to buy the asset, as opposed to have it on a shared basis. That's really clever.
Yes.
Yeah. But you're not counting the value of it.
I'm not counting the electricity, and...
No, but not even that. There's the, what's the value of people coming together and learning, and...
Yes, that's the social, emotional, and, you know...
And that, that's priceless, so.
Yeah. The community value, I think, is, is, I can't, I can't put a price on it. I never would dream to do that. I'd not presume to do that. But just, I know that numbers can kind of, again, these are foul of numbers, they're arguable, but not everyone can have Amazon Prime, or, or whatever. And I think one of the things that I have been struck with, both being at a general way, just on a personal note, one of the things I've been struck by is that experience at a general way, and here, where we're seeing a much more diverse population come into the library, and any times, kind of diversity, whether you want to call it socioeconomic, or by color, or by age, not everybody can afford to go and get their Amazon Prime. What interesting fact about learning is that, again, to the whole why libraries, you can get everything you need online from Google. Lifelong learning among educated, initially well-off individuals, is very technology-driven. Learning, for people who don't fall in either of those categories, for people who are economically challenged, or perhaps start off that being a little less educated, is very place-based learning. They go to libraries. They need a place to learn. So I think if we're going to address the needs of the whole community, and recognize that our community is diverse, and we embrace the diversity that we have, that we need to make sure that we're meeting the needs of everybody as much as we can. So that's why I'm asking for six point six budget increase. Bob also asked us to talk a little bit about future plans. I said I was going to talk a little bit about situational awareness. It was kind of a fudge. It wasn't really. But basically, we're flat out, we're flat out managing this building. Our strategic plan, which we wrote before we even had this building, acknowledged that having this new building was going to put a stress on our staff, even with our new automated systems and our new technology. It was a very deftly-written strategic plan, and they, and it basically said, as appropriate, or as dictated by patrons, they recommended an increase, or it recommended, recommends an increase of one to two point five full-time employee work, staff members. They anticipated this need. Looking at the fiscal year seventeen numbers, and currently what I'm seeing in fiscal year eighteen, I do think that the technology that we have, and some of the other new workflows that we have, we're updating all of our job descriptions, and relooking a lot of that, I think we can absorb about a point five FTE, about twenty hours. I think we can readjust things so that we can better use twenty hours of our staff time. But we are in desperate need, I think, of at least another point seven five person, half a person at a paraprofessional, and at least a quarter, so that's about eighteen to twenty hours, and at least another eight to ten hours of a professional educator, someone with a, someone with a library degree, or maybe even an education degree, to help us with instruction and programming. We, we do need that. And part of that is, not necessarily the situational awareness part, but just the fact that we're just so overwhelmed by the size of this building. Security is, is good, you know, it's a great library, and the design does have a lot of great signs, a lot of line of sight. But it is, we do, we do a lot more walking around, and checking in on people, and things like that. So it is, it is, it does take a toll. So, do you have any questions about our current or future needs?
Well, I mean, you're doing, you're basically, was it twenty-five, thirty percent more space, square footage-wise?
It was, we were thirty-two, now we're at thirty-nine and change. So, yeah, about twenty-five percent.
So basically, your, your staffing...
Stains.
The same, and, you know, there's more desks, there's more walking around, there's more visitors. So I'm actually a little surprised that, you know, that the two-year trend is really an only ask for maybe one more. I mean, go back, go out five years.
Well, if I go out five years, yeah.
If you go out five years, and assuming that the trends...
Continue.
...continue in terms of the usage.
Then it would be, it might be. I, I, I would hesitate to ask for, you know, two and a half people right away. I think that, that might be premature. Again, technology and jobs change, but, and skill sets change. So I was trying to be prudent and sensitive.
Well, the thing is, we spent eighteen million dollars on a new building. Let's get the most out of it, especially since it's the building that everybody comes to, that nobody wanted to pay for, apparently. But, you know, it's...
I will say this, it is being used. It's...
So, I, I think that, and, and you'll figure this out as, as, you know, as it grows...
Yeah.
...what you're going to need. But I think it's, it's not, it's not a far reach to say that we might need to be investing more in terms of personnel and things, as this, you know, as, you know, as the library really comes into its own, and as those numbers grow. So, I mean, that's just, maybe not for this year's discussion, but, you know, certainly over time.
I guess, just, pardon and comment to that, so that we can actually get to the bigger, bigger budgets. And I really, really appreciate you saying that, Barry. I think, I think you're exactly right. But I also know, and I only work here, but I am a resident as well, that there are other gaps in staffing in other areas that are equally as important. And it needs to be considered holistically. And so I appreciate your words. I presented you with what I think is, is a fair, and honest, and very clear ask, or expressed meaning, I'll say. But I do appreciate that the voters, the town taxpayers, and the board of selectmen, and the finance committee understand that this is, this is the town as a whole, and it's not about my department, and one other department. So, thank you.
One last question, Amy.
Yes.
Any, do you see any, on the horizon, any one-time spend, or any technology spend? It may be hard to talk about it today, but either security, you talked about it people kind, or anything along those lines?
No, I would not do that, after eighteen million dollars. I don't, I don't see that. I think actually, we are very well-placed, short of something that's just an unforeseen, something that's supposed to work for a while, it just breaks down. There are small facility issues that we come into contact. The facility is wonderful about working with us. We, we, the trustees are all involved with decisions, you know. But the technology that's in here is, is current, and should last for a while. Do I think in ten years, we're going to need an upgrade of all of our wireless access points? That's entirely possible, but I can't, I actually can't really predict that right now.
That wasn't a trick question. It was just, sometimes you get in and you find oops.
Yeah. No, I think, I think it was, it was pretty well-budgeted, in terms of what the needs are. There are a few sort of wish list items, but they're not really on a grand scale. I think we've managed to take care of most of the gaps already.
Thank you. Any questions from FinCom? Margaret?
Hi, Amy.
The request of the six point six percent increase on the salary line?
Yep.
So it's mostly Sunday?
It's all Sunday.
And what's this?
That's, that's what I didn't ask for. That's, we didn't ask for that, because we really just wanted to get back to where we started. That strategic plan was written while we still had Sundays. So we're, we're eyeing the ball now with providing those services that were, that included the hours, and services we provided on Sunday. So we were just looking for this year to get back on... on Sunday, so, we were just looking for this year to get back on to the, to bring it back, to normalize it.
Okay, so this is not higher, this is...
No. We'll probably bring that up closer to eight, I think, I think, I looked at it one time, I think it's closer to 8% or 9%. Paul?
Actually, it's one thing, I was thinking this was in the LTO, so that's not the 6.6%.
No, that is not in there, that's something that...
Who was that question? Could you repeat the question?
The question was, that, just reiterating, that this, these two numbers, 22 and 13.5, are not included in that ask.
Right, right.
The current ask for fiscal year '19.
Just understanding your staff, does staff have virtually all the hours in senior staff, or is it, oh, bigger staff, there are certain hours...
Be careful, yes. I have to be careful how I answer that question, for safety and security reasons, but, we do use metrics based on the busyness of our library, so, we're particularly busy between, say, probably about 3:00 and 5:00, or 3:00 and 6:00 in the afternoon, schools have gotten out, nobody's really required to go home for dinner yet, we do often have extra staff during those times, and when we know that we're going to be, you know, when it's going to be quiet, and we know that it's, you know, somebody loves it, it's okay. So, we do try to balance the busy and not-busy times, and we do use both that people counter, that's measuring people coming in and out of the doors, and our circulation as a gauge for that, so, that, those are two metrics we use. It's not terribly, it doesn't change terribly much, but, you know, Saturdays are busy, Mondays are not, so we have that, so, yeah. Dan, did you have a question?
Amy, first of all, thank you for a very data-driven presentation, that's helpful. I just have to make the comment, I think I've made it to you before, I think it's important to put this all in perspective, as far as how much money we spend on operating the library in town, equals about how much we spend to remove the trash from the town. So, people should be aware, I'm not comparing you to remove the trash.
No, I know, I know, you're talking about context, you're talking about context.
Context and perspective.
Right, so 6.6% is a large percentage, but in context, it's a small number, yes, it is a small number, so, and Dan, I feel like you just keep raising your finger.
I wanted to commend your first bullet, and that's the first time I've seen that bullet from any budget presentation by any group, and I would hold that up as an example of something we like to see, as a board that has to make tough decisions about what to fund, either below the line, above the line, going back to the voters, that really helps us sell the fact that you're trying hard to save effort here.
Yeah.
So, thank you for that.
Very good presentation, Amy, nice and crisp.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Why don't we take a minute here while we reorganize the room?
Amy? Yes.
Okay, that's probably a good thing, because... Good evening. I'm Greg Barnes, Fire Chief, and also the Emergency Minute, Emergency Management Director for the Town of Reading. For tonight's budget, I thought I would give a little bit of an overview of the Fire Department, and give some information on trending data on responses, and also some information that we found through an internal study that we did, and also, an old study that was done back in 1987. So, the Reading Fire Department has four major responsibilities, fire suppression, fire prevention, the emergency medical system, and also, emergency management. For our salary budget, the total FY19 salary budget request is for just over $5 million, and we're requesting an increase of 10% over the approved FY18 budget. And the increase is to add four additional firefighter positions. And also, we had to calculate in raises for non-union personnel according to the compensation plan, and also, we're in negotiations with the union, we had to factor an estimate for those increases. The expense budget request is $224,500, this is a 17% increase over the FY18 budget, and that's primarily for a couple of things, to provide uniforms and protective clothing for the four requested people, and also, an increase to the line items for EMS supplies, and for firefighter training. It was a $7,000 request for ALS medical supplies, and a $3,000 request for firefighter training. That's used to pay for, to renew paramedic EMT licenses, and also to pay tuition costs for outside training, for certification, for, every two years we have to recertify everybody.
Chief, you said 224K, is that correct?
For the entire expense budget, $224,000.
And that's already 17% grossed up, or no, it's 17%?
That's, that's an increase of 17% over FY18. And most of that, the vast majority of that, is for the protective clothing and uniforms for the people. It costs about $3,500 to outfit a new person in protective clothing, from the helmet, the 甲板, a breathing mask for breathing air, the turn-on coat, turn-on pants, specialized gloves, and boots.
All of that product has a lifetime as well, even during service?
It does, yes, we replace it every six years.
Thank you.
And of the expense budget, 54%, $122,000 is for the EMS system, and that's for supplies, ambulance billing, and EMS licensing, and medical control. We have to have a physician, to serve as our medical control physician. And that physician is Dr. Walker from Melrose Wayfield Hospital, and he's been just fantastic to us. He helps us if we have an issue with something, and he also assists us with training. Our current staffing levels, this is our organizational chart, we have 48.5 equivalent full-time employees. Of these 48.5 people, 44 are assigned to a group. Each group has 11 personnel, consisting of two offices and nine firefighters, and their primary focus is on delivery of emergency services. The administrative functions of the department are done by the chief, assistant chief, and fire prevention officer, and department secretary. And we also have a halftime equivalent position to maintain the municipal fire alarm system. It's an $11,000 salary figure that we have, that we use to maintain the municipal system. So, each day, the on-duty shift staffs two engines, a ladder truck, and an ambulance. To ensure each piece has enough personnel to run it, we have a minimum shift strength of 10 personnel, and we also count the fire prevention officer as part of that minimum staffing level.
Chief, before you go on, I get a lot of questions about the role of the assistant chief, could you comment quickly on his role day-to-day in the operation of the fire department, why it is so crucial?
Oh, absolutely. He assists in every aspect of the department, from operations, to making sure the apparatus is maintained properly, that our reporting data, that the office's reporting data on responses is done correctly, he assists with personnel issues, he assists with training, assists with emergency management function, so, he doesn't, we haven't carved out, you know, this is you, and this is me, he kind of goes right across, right across the board. And I think it's really critical in an operation as ours, that we don't have kind of silos where, you know, that's his, and this is mine, so, we need to fill in for each other on everything, so. It's a position that's really worked out tremendously well for us, and it's really helped us manage the department better, and it's really worked out well, far better than I thought it would.
Chief, in your remarks, could you, because many of the folks at home aren't necessarily following this every year, could you make sure to cover the minimum manning requirements?
Why we do that.
Why we do it?
Sure.
What the surplus, not the surplus, what the amount of reserve is in there that you can deal with injuries, and guys that are out of circulation, would be helpful. Thank you.
We have a minimum shift strength of 10, so we staff two engines, and a ladder truck, and an ambulance. So, on each engine at 10, we'll have three on each engine, so that's six personnel, we'll have two on the ladder truck, and two on the ambulance. You can't run an engine effectively with two people on it. One person is operating the pump on it, you have one person that can open and close the hose, but nobody's the system bringing it into the house. So, to staff that engine effectively, you need at least three people, and then, you're going to need a fourth to really get that line up to a second floor. Our shift strength has 11 personnel, so we can have one person on vacation without creating the need for overtime. The contract allows them to have two people on vacation, and so when we go below that 10, it occurs an overtime cost. Sometimes we go below that because of a vacation, a, somebody might be injured, or somebody might be sick. So, those are the things that drive the overtime, but, to have a, you know, you can't have an ambulance with one person on it, nobody's treating the patient, so that's why, that's why it's a minimum. And, you know, the NFPA's done a number of studies, a piece of fire apparatus staffed with four is considered 100% effective. When you drop that staffing down to three, it's considered 75% effective. You drop it to two, it's considered 50% effective. So, we're generally at the, for our pumps, at the three range, except for when the fire prevention officer is working, then our downtown pump is at two.
Thank you.
If we're able to increase our staffing, now we'll keep the downtown pump at three more often when the fire prevention officer is working. So, our full-time FTEs, FY17, we had 49.5 FTEs, in FY18, we lost a physician through attrition, and we're down to 48.5 FTEs. With the FY19 request, that would bring us up to 53 FTEs. We're requesting four firefighter positions, and also a halftime administrative position that we would share with the police department. Right now, the department has one administrative assistant, and so, this would provide us some depth for vacations and things. Our administrative assistant does the payroll and a lot of administrative stuff, when she's not there, she's so good to us, she'll come in on a Sunday when she takes vacation to get the payroll out. Unfortunately, she's retiring in February, so, we're kind of up against it.
You guys need to get paid.
That position would give us a little bit more depth, but it would also assist the police department, their administrative functions are increasing at a much higher rate, and I think, a lot of the time would be used at the police station, but, again, we would need that in certain, in certain times, when we have a big project to get out, or when cover for vacation or illnesses. Our payroll is done very similar, with the same software system.
You're touching on another topic briefly there, and Chief, this concept of sense of duty and sense of commitment, you know, getting people to come in on the weekend, you can't hire for that, right? That's from the heart, that's not from the line.
It is, yep, and I didn't ask her to do it, and she just does it, it's just, it's really good, and, you know, she, she does it for us, and she does it for the firefighters, it's a wonderful thing, it really is, and both the assistant, and I really, Assistant Chief and I really appreciate it. Kind of got off track a little bit. In August of 2017, we did an internal study to determine how the Reading Fire Department compares with the comparable communities that were outlined by the Finance Committee, and we looked at the 25 peer communities, and we were looking at staffing to see how we compared with them, and we looked at a lot of different areas, I won't go into every specific one, but we looked at, what's the population in these communities, what's the total staffing of them, what's the minimum staffing, how many firefighters per thousand do they have, and also, do they provide emergency medical services like us? Because when you do that, you have much more demands and training, but also, you're sending people out of town on the ambulance, so you're staffing another piece of equipment, so you not only have to worry about fire EMS and hazmat, you have to worry about transporting injured people. So, when we looked at the 25 peer communities, we saw that Reading was on the higher end of the population, we ranked nine out of 25.
How many of those have EMS?
I indicated, you can see the initials in the parentheses, about, I want to say about 14 to 16 of them, 16 or so, maybe a little bit higher, but you can see, I indicated whether they're at the basic life support level when they provide EMS, or the advanced life support level.
Okay.
So, let's see, out of that, 14.
What does Wakefield have? Wakefield's not indicated there?
Wakefield does not provide EMS.
It's right in the middle.
Right, so if there's no indication, like Wakefield, Stoneham, Denham, Shrewsbury, Milton, Danvers, they don't provide EMS at all. For our surrounding communities, more than Reading, they provide ALS level service, Infield an ALS level service, Wakefield doesn't provide EMS, Stoneham doesn't provide EMS, Woben provides a basic life support service.
So, in a mutual aid situation, we have surrounding towns that aren't even up to the level of service that we provide, and we'd be relying on these towns.
Right, when we do, we'll bring in a mutual aid ambulance from Woben, but sometimes we have to bring in a paramedic unit as well.
Yeah, that puts a punctuation point, exclamation point on what you're asking for here. That's going to ripple through everything you talk about.
It does, it does, and I'm going to, it's kind of a good story too, because you see the level of care that the patients receive.
The services are great, but, you know, I guess what it means is that, and I do know how good it is, but what it, you know, one of the things that happens is, your staff levels, by the nature of what you're doing, has to be, if you think about it... levels, by the nature of what you're doing, has to be, if you think about it in a peer community standpoint, I mean, you've got to have more fight, you have to have more personnel just on the baseline of being able to provide.
Right. With the firefighters that are assigned to the unit, to the ambulance, they're providing double duty.
Right.
They're providing EMS services that if the community doesn't, they're bringing in a private company to take care of that.
Right.
So we're doing it with our firefighters, so they're doing a dual duty. But we also send them out of town to the, to the hospital, and they can be gone an hour, a little bit longer, depending upon what the traffic is, how busy the hospital was at that time. So we lose those people. So, you know, we say our minimum is 10, but a lot of times we're down to eight because we've sent them out of town. Sometimes we've sent them with a third person. In extreme situations, that we've sent them with two additional firefighters in the back because the patient is so critical.
Right.
So we've lost a significant part of the department, but, you know, you take care of the patient.
Well, the value proposition by comparison also is that, you know, more training, people here are more experienced, costs go up, I get that, but in a relative way to buying it on a contract basis, we are really double dipping here.
Yeah, yeah.
In a, in a big way. And I'm not sure that everybody, we take you for granted. We take all of you that are up here for granted, in my opinion, in that, in this regard, you know, what's delivered for what's spent. It's just, you know, an observation.
Thank you. We try to give the best service that we can with the people that we have. We also, so when we looked at our total staffing compared to our peer communities...
Sir?
Can we answer the question? When I saw a neighborhood, you said we didn't have ALS.
This is terrible.
How do we get supported? I was thinking maybe on an aspect of your technical.
Right, a community that provides a basic level...
Chief, can you repeat the question? We're having a real trouble.
Folks can stand up when they actually ask the question.
Might be helpful if you use the mic up here.
If you use the mic.
People in the room can't hear you.
Nobody... No, right here. Sorry. The acoustics in this room are so good, we can't hear anything.
So I was looking for clarification, what you answered in that discussion. When I saw so many neighboring communities that don't have ALS, what are they relying on? And you said private companies. So they're relying on private services?
Yes, yes. They'll have a contract with a, with a private company to provide that level of service. They'll transport too, but they'll, they'll require a company to come in to assist.
And I also know, were you able to bill insurance companies and bill back for a lot of this?
Yes.
What percent of the cost of having ALS, would you say is covered by what we're able to claim and bill back?
You mean the cost of the service compared to what we bring in? It's probably somewhat of a break-even situation. We're not making money, but we're, we're not losing money.
But we're not losing a lot, but we're getting a lot stronger service.
Yeah, we might come out ahead a little bit. It depends on how you look at it. We pay a stipend to the firefighters, we have to buy the ambulance, we have to buy the disposable supplies, and we have to train and recertify. So there's some real significant costs in there. But we do bring in, you know, in the $800,000 range, so that offsets a lot of those costs. And the real key thing is that we get to choose who's providing that level of service and what their training is. When you, when you deal with a private company, you don't know who you, they're going to provide you two paramedics that are qualified, but they could be brand-new paramedics, or they could, you know, have 25 years' experience. You don't know.
Right.
You don't have any control of that.
Difference in control, yeah, absolutely.
And you don't know where that ambulance is coming from. They could, that ambulance could be in another community. It's not, not necessarily going to be in your community.
I see it's a huge asset, that's very...
Chief, two other questions. Do you have a view of this with regard to the, to the manpower assessment as well?
Yes.
And then, at some point, can you speak to the impact on overtime reduction that the proposed addition might potentially benefit?
I can, I don't have it in this presentation. I can estimate it. I can just take a wild guess.
At an appropriate time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So when we looked at the peer communities, we saw that Redding was on the higher end of the population, and firefighter staffing was on the lower end, on each of the categories that we looked at. So when we looked at the total number of firefighters in each of the departments in the comparable communities, Redding ranked 15 out of 25. And like the discussion we're having, it's important to note that not all of those departments are providing EMS services. When you look at the ratio of the number of firefighters per thousand citizens, the average fire department staffing for the comparable communities was 1.97 firefighters per thousand citizens. And Redding ranks at the eighth lowest staffing. Our average is 1.78 firefighters per thousand citizens. And this is below the community, comparable community average. To bring us up to the average would require four additional firefighters. And in this, nice stuff.
There's a show, Chief, sorry to interrupt.
That's all right.
No, that doesn't work for this room. Wakefield, that doesn't provide ALS, has more firefighters per thousand citizens than we do, and we provide ALS?
Yes.
With quite, quite fewer staff.
Does that chart change dramatically, Chief? If you just look at the operation, the guys on the four teams, as opposed to the chief, the assistant chief, do you expect the rankings to change much if you just look at it in terms of the positions you're adding and the functions they do only?
If we add these positions, will we need to add other positions?
No, does the ranking here change materially if you just look at the 44 going to, so our 41 going to 45, as opposed to the whole?
If we added four, it would bring us to the average.
Okay, either way.
This slide illustrates the minimum number of firefighters on duty in each of the fire departments in the comparable communities. In this comparison, Redding ranks 13 out of 25. We also looked at a study that was done in 1987 by, by a company called George Paul Fire Safety Consultants. It was done before the Main Street Fire Station was built. A lot of that study looked at sighting of the, of the fire station, but also looked at staffing and other things. And when that report was written back in 1987, the on-duty group strength was 11 personnel, which is the same as it is today. In that report, they recommended an increase in staffing by four personnel. The report examined emergency response data for 1986 and 1987, and at that time, the emergency call volume was 2,500 responses per year. And since then, we've seen our responses exceed 3,500 per year. And that's a 40% increase in call volume. The population also listed in the report was approximately 24,000, and since then, we've seen the population grow to over 26,000. And also, when that report was written, we didn't have the major projects that we've seen come in since then. Just some of the examples were Redding Woods, Redding Commons, Johnson Woods, the Walkersburg Drive development, I don't believe the gazebo circle development was in then. And so there's, there's been a significant change in, kind of in the four corners of the community when you look at it. We also examined the town of Redding's Economic Development Action Plan, 2016 to 2022, created by the MAPC, Metropolitan Area Planning Council, to offer insights to future development. And the MAPC predicted a substantial need for housing and significant growth in the senior population of Redding in the near future. The trend of the new growth consists of multi-floor, multi-unit wood-framed buildings and multi-floor, multi-unit wood-framed mixed-use residential commercial buildings is likely to continue. Also, the factors of an increasing population and an increasing senior population and an increased number of large residential buildings will combine to cause an increased responses for, for us. Let's jump in a little bit to our emergency responses. These responses are just from January 1st of this year to December 1st of this year. And during that time period, we responded to 3,543 emergency calls for assistance. That's a little bit of a breakdown in the type of calls that we're going to, that we respond to. Many of the fire department's responses require more than one piece of fire apparatus on scene. And these would be emergency medical calls, fires, motor vehicle accidents, construction accidents, hazardous material incidents, and flammable liquid spills. An example would be a motor vehicle accident on the highway, 128 or 193. It's not unusual for us to send an engine, a ladder truck, and an ambulance up there. If there are significant injuries on scene, the call will require the entire shift. All fire departments in the state are required to report response data to the state fire marshal's office. Redding's required reporting data from January 1st to December 1st, 2017, included 28 fires, defined as structure fires, nine fires of mobile equipment, and 21 outside fires in addition to other responses.
And one of those fires was pretty big.
Yeah, one of them was pretty big, yeah. Unfortunately for the people that lived there, but yeah, that, that for us, we count that as one incident, but we were there for that, that day, over 12 hours that day, back the next day, and then the next day after that. And we had 17 engines, six ladder trucks, five towers, over 120 firefighters. It was a significant response.
Chief, do you have a view at this is, can you back up?
Yeah, could you back up on that?
That's a view of the data from somebody picking up the phone and saying, "I need help." And these are the kinds of requests they made.
Yes.
But it's not a view of the consumption of time from the department to serve that customer. To your point earlier, that one building fire, I'm sure would be a lot bigger than that really small slice of pie. Fires in general, I assume, are bigger than, one fire can be, tie up the whole group, for example.
Yes.
Is there a view of this, of the data by use or by how much of the capacity of the department is consumed?
No, I've often thought about doing that, and, you know, the number of pieces of equipment, like, on a time basis. I've thought about doing it. Our data doesn't, our...
You can't get it that way automatically.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it just, so when you look at that, when I see, it looks like there's a slice that says "fire protection system activated." Are those false alarms?
Yes, that would be a system activated in a building. Could be caused by...
That could be my wife by herself.
It could be somebody caused by cooking. It could be a system that's malfunctioned.
Does it include malicious alarm?
There is one malicious call. It's very, it's right to the right of that, right at the top. It's, we don't have a lot of it, so it's basically the line.
All right, thank you.
Fortunately, we don't have a lot of that.
So the assist the resident, that's a pretty big slice, too, from a frequency standpoint, and I'm suspecting that's going to go up.
Yes.
I mean, I'm guessing that you get all ages, of course, but as you have an aging population, there may be more calls. I mean, have you ever looked at, do you have any idea?
We are, and we're really tracking that. Within that assist the resident is assist a person that's handicapped. They may not follow.
Right.
And they need just, they need to be, they need to be helped up, they need just a little bit of help. And we've seen that increase substantially the last couple of years. And so we code that separately, but I've grouped a number of like calls together to have a project that can really paint the picture. But that's something that's definitely on the increase. A lot of sick people are at home now. And, you know, a lot of people are working and they're by themselves.
People are sent home earlier from the hospital, I mean, that...
Correct, yeah. A lot of elderly people are by themselves, and they may need just a little bit of help.
Dan?
See, this, I don't know if this crosses over more to dispatch, but the call boxes on the telephone poles, those date back probably 100 years. Are they still used by people to report incidents?
They are still used. That's connected to the municipal system. And, and it also connects school buildings, the library, 52 Sanborn Street. That's how we got that call.
No kidding.
Through the, so it's an old system.
Yep.
You know, we could take those boxes off the telephone poles, but we'd still need to maintain the system.
You're required.
Because that's our reporting for the schools, all the public buildings. And then we like to have them in buildings that we consider high hazard.
Okay.
Because otherwise, it goes through a central station. If they don't pay their bill, they're going to get cut off. We may not know about that. They're required to have it, but it could be cut off. And the other thing is the central station, the alarm company, has 90 seconds to turn that call around. So they'll take that, and then they have 90 seconds. So that's a long delay. 52 Sanborn Street, we got it very early. And I couldn't imagine what that would be like if we got a 90-second delay on that.
Right, very good.
Thank you.
So it's a little bit of a cost for us to maintain it out into the street.
But they are being used.
But we need it for the buildings. And it is used still. Emergency medical responses are continuing on an upward trend. This is an, this is a kind of a look at the types of calls that we're responding to as a percentage. And you can, you can see, you know, I know, I was still a little bit of the police chief stunder. I know one of the calls that he sees increasing is psychiatric problems. You can see, that's a large slice of the responses that we're going on. We see that as an increase. But we see lots of falls, we see traumatic injuries, traffic transportation incidents, allergic reactions, breathing problems. We see a very wide range of patients.
Chief, where would opiate, responding to an opiate individual?
It's down, down around the eight o'clock position. Overdose of poisoning.
Oh, sorry, thank you, thank you.
And then there's, and you'll see another slide, the next slide will show medications given. So from January 1st to December 1st, we responded to 2,073 emergency medical calls. When we compare the data for the same time period last year, those responses were 1,853. So we had an 11.8% increase from last year to this.
It would be interesting, I know in an earlier slide, you were showing a comparison from, you know, a number of years ago.
Yes.
And, you know, the numbers of, available numbers haven't changed for your team, really. But that last slide you had up there, it would be interesting to know in 1986, how many overdoses and psychiatry, I bet, I bet the difference is night and day.
Yeah, it would be. I agree. Yeah, we wouldn't see as many overdoses. This slide indicates medications given to patients this year. But it also illustrates how sophisticated the treatments that firefighters can give, all the different medications that firefighters can give in the patient's house or in the ambulance on the, on the way to the hospital. It's really amazing. This, this wasn't possible 15 years ago. So we went to the ALS level in 2003. So it's kind of new. Before that, these medications weren't given by us. We'd have to bring in a private company to do that. And back in, when the report was written in 1987, I don't think there was ALS available to the community at all. That, that just came into place right around that time.
You guys are pharmacists while you're fighting fires, huh?
They are. You know, and all those medications have to be calculated based upon the patient's weight, so they can't just, not like a standard dose, they have to calculate it. This slide is an indication of the demographics of the patients we're transporting. And the 55 and older is a significant part of the patients that we're transporting.
Which is our fastest-growing segment of the population.
Yes, yep.
Might be interesting to look at a cut of that based on the building type. Is it a single-family home or one of the multifamily identities as well?
Yeah.
Just be curious if that's any better or worse, or is it just bigger because there's more and more?
We're going to nerd you to death with this stuff.
Just curious, I don't think it drives any decision-making, but just curious.
Well, I guess that means we're going to fund the half a position for his clerical.
You know, we do have assisted living facilities that have come to Redding that have resulted in increased call volume. And we do have complexes that are specifically for older population that we do respond to quite regularly. This is kind of a, a slide that shows the EMS responses going up in the, in the blue... This is kind of a slide that shows the EMS responses going up in the blue line and the total fire department staffing in the red line, kind of going down and flattening out. So, you can see our call volume is continually marching upwards.
Is the data for '06 through '14 really flat for firefighters? Is that actually what the real data said?
It kind of dropped. It drops off with that loss of position. Oh, it shouldn't have been.
This is... I'm sorry, this is staffing. It's not activity. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We have to add 1970.
Okay, now I understand. Thank you.
Yeah, there's no new... There's no net new people.
Got it.
Or less.
Got it.
Last year, year over year, we're down one.
Sorry.
This does say, though, we're going to have to, on the capital side, think about more ambulances and less fire trucks.
Put a trailer on it.
Well, actually, we have a lot of ambulances. Everything in this picture here is an ambulance. We registered... All our fire... Our first-line fire apparatus are registered as Class V ambulances. That allows us to put ALS medical supplies on that ambulance. If we didn't register it, we couldn't provide it.
So, you've got all that stuff on a pump or two?
Yeah. So, our two pumps that are in service and our ladder truck are in service. Whenever there's a paramedic on one of those trucks, which is basically all the time...
That bag comes on with them?
That bag comes on with them.
So, other than transport, everything else is duplicated across the fleet?
Right. And we do that because our ambulance could be at the hospital for an hour, and we have a paramedic on scene. I want to make sure they have the tools that they can treat that patient. So, they have the Big 12 lead defibrillator monitor. They have the medication, so they just go right to work. We'll bring in another ambulance, but the patient's going to be stabilized and treated, and then off they go. So, this is of our 25 comparable communities. Only one runs a system like ours, and that's Belmont. Canton has one piece of fire apparatus that they registered as an ALS ambulance. So, this is kind of not... This is a big thing in kind of in the state to do. It's unusual for fire departments to do that.
Chief, you're to be commended for doing that. This is kind of, on one hand, why wouldn't you do it? On the other hand, as you just said, you're leading the pack. This is a way to get more leverage out of the fleet.
Right, right. It's, you know... I couldn't think of anything more frustrating to be a paramedic, to have that training and not be able to use it on someone that needs it.
Right, exactly. Dan?
There are a lot of AEDs around town, out in the field, but I really wonder how many people would really know how to use one in a pinch. Are there any trainings that you're able to offer with your limited resources or that the state can offer?
We're... I'm trying to get a program up and running. We have a... One of our new people is interested in doing that.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to get a new program up and running. I need to talk to the town manager about it, and that's a preliminary discussion. And basically, I'd like it to pay for itself, where it goes out and does some training for a group.
Yep.
And then they pay a fee to pay for those costs, so it's like revenue neutral.
I see.
But mechanically, we'd have to handle those funds, and that's how we have to decide to do that.
Chief, could you just... Sorry, back up to the picture. I just wanted to... I think there's a misperception in town of when a call goes in and three vehicles show up to an event. And you've explained it to me, but could you just explain it again so that people understand why more than one vehicle shows up to a house on any given occasion?
Sure. So, for a routine medical, we'll send a... We'll dispatch the ambulance and a piece of fire apparatus, depending upon how we've divided up the town. The west side station, it'll be the west side engine. Downtown, it could be the engine or ladder truck, depending upon how we've done it. So, the firefighters on the ambulance will go in, and they'll bring in a big defibrillator monitor. They'll bring in a medication drug box, a first-in bag, and then oxygen. So, they're coming in with a boatload of supplies to start treating that patient. The firefighters on the fire apparatus, sometimes they can be there... Sometimes they're there first. But also, they have to set up the stretcher, and they have to assist in carrying that patient out, and then bringing in any other equipment that may be needed. Many people are up on the second floor of their home, and many people you have to carry out, and you need more than two people to do it. If you tried to do that job with just two people, you'd have a tremendous amount of injuries, and you'd just burn those people out. By bringing the other resources in, you're able to efficiently get those... To treat the people and get them out. But also, as the paramedics are treating, one of the other members is gathering medical data about them, about the condition, you know, how acute is it, how... What their medical history is, what their medications are, and things like that. So, a lot goes into taking care of a medical call. So, that's why, when they see two fire trucks pull up, they see two... An ambulance and a fire truck pull up, it's like, "Well, I just called the ambulance. Why do I have that?" And then sometimes the police show up. Sometimes they can be there first, you know, but they'll be there to assist us as well.
Thanks.
Does the equipment on that second truck get used frequently? I understand the need for additional manpower, but do you actually need the vehicle itself?
We need the vehicle because that's what they're assigned to. So, if they need to break away to something else, they're all ready to go.
Ready to go.
Yeah. So, if the engine or the ladder truck was the second piece in, they wouldn't necessarily grab their medical equipment off that truck, but they would be going to the ambulance, and they'll get the stretcher, set the stretcher up. And then generally, what has to go into the home is called a stair chair. It's a small folding chair. That has to be brought in, set up, and patient lifted on it comfortably, covered with blankets. So, there's a fair amount that goes into packaging them up efficiently. And then all that equipment needs to get out of the house, stored away.
Got it.
You know, it's... The equipment that they have to come in has increased significantly over the years. It used to be just two bags, and now it's very large bags. The defibrillator monitor is a very sophisticated device, and they can't give medications unless they apply that, read the strip, before they go. That's just a slide for ambulance revenue for the last eight fiscal years.
Bob, when did we touch fees? Was that '16 or... This would seem to say it's '15.
It's '15.
Do you recall this '15, '16 area?
Yeah, I think it was '15.
I think the bump you see is from the increase to the fees.
Yeah, I would have... It would have been more than...
Because it was fairly flat, and then it just went down.
Thank you.
And this is where the revenue is coming from. You can see the different insurance companies that it's coming from. Medicare, although they don't reimburse, they reimburse at a lower level, is a fair amount of the revenue that we get. The reduction of our population that we're treating, a high percentage of them are on Medicare.
Those are dollars. Do you, again, have a sense of the number of patients that are either uninsured or self-insured?
Yeah, I could run those figures. In our community, we have a... A lot of people have insurance. Some don't. Occasionally, we come across somebody with a hardship, and there's a process that they go through to... So, sometimes... So, if there's a hardship, we'll assist them where we can.
Yep.
And there's a process for that. Many people have insurance. What we're seeing is their copays have gone up considerably. And that's where you see the self-pay has gone up. And, you know, some of the copays on some of them are high.
Yeah.
You know, yeah. It could be... Yeah, it could be a couple hundred or more. Just quickly on emergency management, the primary goal for emergency management is to identify areas of vulnerability for the community and to prepare for disasters, whether natural or man-made, and to coordinate response of a wide range of agencies and to assist in the recovery phase. And the secondary goal is to make sure that we're in compliance with any state requirement so we're eligible for disaster reimbursements. So, over the last, I want to say probably... So, since 2001, we've seen an increase in storm events being eligible for presidential disaster declarations. And this is a graph of the funds that we've received back from FEMA since 2001. So, over that time period, both the town of Reading and Reading Municipal Light have received just under $1.4 million. So, it's a considerable amount of money. So, just in closing, the fire department, as with other town departments, has seen considerable changes in our area of responsibility. And it's due to increases in population, changes in demographics, new development, changes in the world around us. And it's resulted in an increased demand for emergency responses and also increased reporting responsibilities. And these issues have required us to plan, develop, and provide new training programs, and also add new equipment to our fire apparatus. So, thanks for having me tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from the board.
Just one real quick, Chief. So, on the operational side, you know, you made a pretty compelling case for sort of adding to staff. With all the new projects in town, many of which are four and five stories, do you anticipate needing additional capital equipment, like, for example, another ladder, which is a million bucks a pop fully?
No, I don't anticipate any heavy equipment like that. No, no. But with those buildings come a potential, and they come with increased population, increased demands. You know, they all have alarm systems, so occasionally they malfunction. Residents that need medical care, you know, a cooking fire, you know. So, there's... They all bring responses. And the type of construction is concerning. And it's also concerning, as we see in the news, when it's under construction. You know, you have this very large vertical lumber pile.
It's a matchbox, yeah.
Yeah.
Chief, one question. It's not mine. It's actually from a citizen. I feel embarrassed to ask it, but they shall remain anonymous. The question was, how feasible it is... It's actually much more direct than that, but how feasible it is to actually close one of the two fire stations? And this individual was poking at the one on...
West Street.
West Street, west side of town.
Yeah, Bourbon Street. Well, there's no money in closing the fire station because all our... About 96% of our budget is in salaries. So, if you close the station, you're not going to save any money. If you take an engine company out of service, you save money. But the thing is that it puts the population at risk. When we send a... When we have a car accident up on the highway, we have to send an engine up there. So, we're right in the intersection of 128 and 93. We're up on the highway all the time. So, when a fire call comes in, they need to get out of the highway and rush hour and then respond to it. So, it creates kind of an unworkable situation for us that's dangerous. You have one engine where you have a limited water supply at 750 gallons of water. You don't have another pump to supply it. So, it's not a... It's not a safe choice for the community. And just closing the station and bringing people downtown only increases the emergency response to the west side of the town. And over the west side of town, we have a school, Josh Whitten School, that's not completely sprinkled. It's only partially sprinkled. We have Parker. We have Austin Prep. We have the Johnson Woods complex in there to protect. We have Archstone to protect. And then also, that station responds to gazebo circle, which is a large number of apartment buildings that aren't sprinkled. 5 Washington Street is not sprinkled. Buildings 1 through 3, Summit Drive, six-story buildings that aren't sprinkled. So, it has... And then, let's see, 237 to 241 Main Street, those apartment buildings aren't sprinkled. 307, 309 Main Street, 363 Main Street. It just goes on and on, so...
I'm really impressed how you can do that.
So...
I think the citizen got his answer.
And we're also divided by the railroad tracks.
Sure.
You know, we all get stuck with the commuter railroad tracks. You see what Bourbon Street is like sometimes when the train comes through. So, yes, Bonnie got it right. So, it's something that was talked about in 1987, to close that station, to bring everybody down to the downtown station and create a bigger fire station, to build a five-day... A five-bay fire station that would have a mechanics bay and then enough space to run 11 people. But they decided not to purchase the house next door or take it by eminent domain, so it became a smaller station. But ever since that, 1987, when that study came out to bring people downtown, that has just came up over and over. During budget cuts, well, we should close the west side station. What are you going to save by closing the station? You still need the personnel. And you're not... You can't really run an effective fire department with... You really need two engines and a ladder truck to make an effective fire attack on just a small home. And to try to do it with two engines or one engine and a ladder truck is just not going to make it. It's not going to be safe for the community or the firefighters.
Well, thanks. I expected that response. And again, if it's asked by one citizen, I'm guessing there's more than several others that'll have the same kind of question.
I've asked.
Okay.
It's a very reasonable...
It's an unreasonable question.
It's not an unreasonable question, but the answer, you know, kind of puts it to sleep, I think.
It demands a detailed analysis of why, and the conditions, and the risks, and mitigations. So, appreciate all the detail. I'm impressed you have an encyclopedic memory of sprinkled buildings in Reading.
Yeah. And, you know, the other thing is, we don't have the space downtown to accommodate everybody, the entire shift. We just don't. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? We have a few here, Chief, before you leave. I'll just go around the room. Elaine, you may have to come up because this room is like dead quiet in the back. We can't hear you.
Thank you, Ms. Elaine. Elaine, I have a precinct one question. On the chart where you had all the communities and the number of firefighters, so we were 1.78 that left that list. I was just wondering if you overlay or look at the data of square area. What does that... Does that tell us in terms of where we are? So, for those communities, like, I just... That Andover is a community that's a much larger...
30 square miles. Yeah, 30 square miles, probably.
Right, and I think they were at a little over 2 or 2.0. So, I'm just wondering if you looked at it, and what impact does that have, this area?
I did look at it. And, you know, a community that's denser and has houses and things that are closer together and generally results in more responses than a community that's spread out. If you're in a community that's spread out, generally you have longer response times, but it's more rural. So, Andover has kind of a mix. You know, they have some areas that are spread out, but they have some areas that are congested. So... But I did look at it. But I thought it was most effective to look at population because that's what drives our responses and not square miles.
I appreciated understanding that all the fire apparatus are actually ambulances. I've often, you know, seen something go out, and, you know, if you know it's not a fire, it was some sort of more ambulance, I'm like, "Why are they bringing the big fire truck and, you know, wasting all that money?" But clearly, it's really an ambulance as well as the fire truck.
Right.
And I just... In terms of... Sorry, that's three questions.
That's fine. There's no limit here.
The...
You shouldn't say that.
Like, wear and tear, like, the impact... I was just wondering, sort of, what the biggest issues are for the wear and tear on the trucks? So, right, every time you take a truck out, you know, what's the biggest thing? I was thinking that driving on... Driving south on South Main Street might be one of the biggest wear and tear factors on the sour trucks, but I just was...
Yeah, there is wear and tear. They do break down. On a fire engine, we'll get 20 years out of a fire engine. On a, on a fire engine, we'll get twenty years out of a fire engine. Our, the last one that went, that we just traded in was in, was in nineteen ninety-five, so we've got twenty-two years out of that. Um, so they'll do ten years as a first-line fire truck, and then ten years as a backup. So, we get full twenty years out of them. Our ladder truck, you know, we are looking at getting between fifteen and seventeen years out of it. Um, you know, the, so it does cause wear and tear, but it's something that we've been doing in this, in many other departments for, for decades.
I just wanted to flip the ambulance, the usage of the trucks, of the fire apparatus as ambulance, was in any way, you know, accelerating that, more transition?
No, by registering it as ambulances, we were just able to upgrade the equipment that we carry on them. So we didn't increase their responses. A lot of times when the ambulances, because we get back-to-back medical calls quite frequently, so the ambulance could be out, we're waiting for an ambulance to come from, say, North Reading. They're ALS, but we can start that ALS level of care as soon as we arrive on scene with that, with that piece of fire apparatus, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mark.
Thank you. Hi, Chief. I know that John asked this question, and I wasn't sure if it was answered, or you said you were gonna come back to us, but the question about with four additional people, what impact you thought that would have on overtime?
I'm just a ballpark, and you can't really, you know, one of the things that drives, you know, who's gonna retire in, in injuries and things? And I don't know when somebody would get injured and things, but I would imagine it would result in a reduction in overtime in, in, in the a hundred thousand dollar range, maybe a little bit more. It could be better. It just depends upon what the injury rate is and things. Hopefully, with some additional help, it could reduce the injury factor.
Paper four, hold on. Get four, paper three.
Sorry to make your run appear.
You must be thinking a little bit alike, my dovetails, my question dovetails with that. With the additional four firefighters, and you might have gone into this, would you change your minimum requirement, or you put more on staff at once? How do you...
They would all be assigned to a group, so the groups would go from eleven to twelve. So, if I had two people on vacation...
That's why I'm gonna help with overtime.
Right, if I had two people on vacation, we don't have to hire now.
So, the minimum stays at ten?
Right, it would stay at ten. We wouldn't then increase the minimum to eleven.
Yeah.
It would stay as it is.
Okay, thanks.
But when everybody is in, they'd have a, a much more effective response, because they'd be at twelve.
Right.
Other questions before we move on? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Good job.
Sorry, I took some...
Great job.
Thank you. Yeah.
We don't often get the chance to see you, other than when something's on fire, so it's nice to just have a calm discussion.
Look different without that.
Good evening tonight, thank you for having myself as well tonight. Mark Segal, Chief Police. Also with me is Dave Clark, Deputy Chief of Police here in the town of Reading. I'd like to start as well by showing you our organizational chart currently. One police chief, one deputy. We have four division commanders, which are lieutenants, each in charge of the division, support services, patrol of the division, day shift, night shift. We have seven sergeants, which are all in the patrol division, two assigned to the day shift, and five assigned to the night shift. Each of the three platoons at night have four officers assigned to each platoon. The day platoons, uh, each have, uh, sorry, one has four, one has three. The one with three was the budget cut from last year, that we took the officer, we dropped from forty-two officers to forty-one. We have six officers assigned to the detective division, one is the school resource officer, one is assigned to a drug task force with the FBI, and the other four are assigned to the detective division on a daily basis. In the support services division, we have the safety officer, the armor of the fleet maintenance officer, the community service officer, and then we have civilian personnel person who does parking enforcement and the animal control. Parking enforcement's done eighteen hours a week right now, and the animal control's at thirteen. And right now in the records office, we have two clerks, which are our full-time, thirty-seven and a half week positions right now, currently. So that's, I just wanted to give you a quick overview of that before we get started. All right, actually, I did mine on a word doc, it's not like breaks at a, at a powerpoint, but kind of similar to last year. Basically, the beginning right here goes over from the October tenth meeting, when I did the staffing study in front of the board. I'm requesting an additional, five additional officers. This is based on the area of focus that we looked at back in the summer, where population, sworn officers, civilian employees, school resource officers, detectives, task force officers, dispatchers, calls for service, population density, housing unit density, command staff levels, and police department budgets of twenty-two comparable talents that we compared ourselves to, that we were able to get results back, back over the summer. The last time a study like this was conducted was in nineteen ninety-eight by a company, EMS Consultants out of Belmont, New Hampshire. Back then, the company concluded that our department at the time should have had between forty-three and forty-four sworn officers. It was important to note back then that the population as of two thousand was twenty-three thousand seven hundred people. Since then, Walkersburg Drive, the Jordans, Home Depot, several restaurants and retail stores has grown. Also, we've had several licensed bars and nightclubs come into Walkersburg as well. Our calls for service has grown significantly to the result of that, that area, as well as the several apartment complexes that have come in the last several years as well. Our current population as of the other day was twenty-six thousand six hundred and fifty-six people in the town already, according to our town clerk. Again, I'm asking for five additional officers, three to fill the night shifts, one to fill the current opening on day shift, and an additional school resource officer to help out with the, uh, the calls for service at the high school, junior school level primarily.
And the half, the half administrator as well?
I'm sorry, yeah, the half administrator position, which would help out. Right now, currently, the laws changed last year with the, uh, the, uh, reference, yeah, public records law, and we've, our calls haven't, I mean, our, our public record requests haven't gone up, uh, much more than last year. However, the length to, to actually look at them and actually digest them for, for the public is taking much longer per request. Staffing wages. Wages are up thirteen point seven percent for this budget request. Again, that's the five additional officers that we're requesting, as well as the half of, uh, uh, clerk that we're requesting as well. The expenses are up sixteen point seven percent on this request, and most of that is due to membership dues, some of the actual memberships that we belong to, the nemble, the math chiefs, major cities chiefs, the International Association, Chief of Police Association, but the majority of that is all from uniform costs to, to fund the additional officers that we're requesting. It's approximately four to five thousand dollars to fund for each officer, three uniforms in accordance with...
So, Chief, I don't know if you, if you, in your calculations, if you've done this, if you haven't, it's something we could get another day, but, so you have a thirteen percent growth rate in the wages, and you've included in that is five officers.
Correct.
That's, I don't think that's the whole thirteen, though, right?
It's, yeah, it's both had it, but, yeah, I'm sorry...
Oh, okay, so that, yeah, that's really what I'm after. So, your real wage increases are like three?
Correct, that, yes, I'm sorry, that's, yeah, the actual raises that, uh, the non-uniated, possibly for the, we're in negotiations with all three unions we have right now.
No, I know we are, so...
So, that's where we're at, yeah.
And so that's a bit of a wild card, too, but I think it's valuable to know, to differentiate the two.
Is it?
So that you, you know, you've got some idea that if you were level, if you were level without them, you know, you're right in that three percent range. Would that be relatively true on the expense side, too?
Yeah, the expenses, we, yeah, exactly, we'd, up about three to four percent. Some of the training right now is going up in price for daily training for an officer, so that's why we've added additional training class in the membership dues, but the rest of it, the majority of it is in uniforms.
Well, you know, the reason I ask that question is invariably, you know, we're, we're asked, not that we necessarily have the answer, but we get asked anyway.
Sure.
So, what do you mean they're going up thirteen percent? Well, in real dollars, they're going up about three, but then we've got the added, the need for the added resources, which, you know, so I think it's sometimes valuable to, I mentioned this last night as well, to differentiate the, you know, kind of the want from the current status and, you know, what level really means. Level really means it's gonna cost you three to four percent, you're in contract negotiations and everything else, so...
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Patrol division, our biggest division, and the most visible division in town is the patrol division, I like it. Right now, like I said, we have two sergeants, seven patrol officers a day, we have eighteen officers working nights, one lieutenant, five sergeants, twelve patrol officers. All right. So, our stats, okay, as of, I'm sorry, as of November thirtieth, these are our calls for service. We have approximately nineteen thousand, a little over nineteen thousand calls for service so far this year. I just did a calculation a minute ago. If we continue with the same amount that we've had, we'll be over the last previous year's calls for service as of the year.
Are they driving better, or do we just don't have time to give tickets?
So, we have, actually, I looked at that, we were down, it says written citations, we were down last, this current year compared to last, again, that's without the last month, but also, we, this is with five less officers this past year, we had three in the academy, two retirements, now and one less person, uh, because of the budget cuts last year.
Right.
So, uh, three from the academy have just graduated, they're on their own as of October, so now tickets will probably be going up.
If you want.
It's, it's simple math, it's arithmetic.
Yeah. All right, these are reports filed, these are actual reports that were written, and again, we just looked at the numbers before we got here tonight, we're already over that seventeen hundred thirty-two so far in the last thirteen days.
So, Chief, an incident report, is that defined as kind of like a crime, as opposed to like a call for service?
It's, it could be, it could be a crime, it's kind of, a lot of reports, a lot of things are just log entries, that we go to a call, an alarm call, for example, check it, your alarm goes off at your house, we walk around the house, check it to secure, there's no report written, it's just a log entry. But if we, if we, you know, for example, your door was, you know, a jar, we go in, we have to actually look around, see if there's someone in there, find out what's going on, that we have, it takes a little more, we have to write a report on that. So just to have a little more documentation on, on it, so that would be a report filed. But it could also be, um, a domestic disturbance, it could be anything at all, that's, that we actually, actually write a full report on. All right, arrests, our arrest reps so far as of November thirtieth of this year, complaint apps, a lot left this past year. A complaint app is an application filed with the court, the summons with the court, that's someone wasn't arrested usually, but, but some where we're actually taking charges, formal charges on other person, so that's up. You see protective custody, they're drunk and alcohol, that's up. Motor vehicle crashes, it's actually will end up being up, we're already had, we're already over the five hundred and twenty-eight from two years ago, when we checked this, this morning. Fraud, calls of theft, that could be credit card calls, a lot of, we're getting a lot of complaints from elderly people who, who are getting, you know, scammed, and, like we tell them, don't, don't talk, just hang the phone up, but a lot of them fall through, and sometimes independent callers, because they end up in a scam.
Chief, another, this is another example where this is just the view of, of activities or requests or an arrest, but I bet you spend a bit more time on protective custody than you do on an arrest, or maybe I'm kind of backwards?
It, it depends, so for example, an arrest could be a, a warrant arrest, which could be, end up in and out within forty-five minutes to an hour. A protective custody, depending upon what the issue is, we could end up at someone's home, helping them out for a couple of hours, and getting someone into a placement, into a, you know, outplacement, inplacement, helping a family member with, with a loved one that's has an issue. Uh, so yeah, you're right, it could take a lot more time. That's, we don't really have a way of actually, you know, of, of, kind of digesting how much time each call takes, except for the actual report times. I don't have a kind of a system of actually being able to tell them exactly how long each call is.
Just curious, because not everything is created equal, not everything is weighted equally.
So the bad news is business is up and manpower is down.
Correct. Three added alarm calls this year, I'll show you, as well as some other call that, you know, can take anywhere from ten minutes to a half an hour, forty-five minutes. Sometimes we have to wait on a business, we wait around for a, for the landlord or the superintendent of custodians to show up, so we can do a walk through the schools or walk through the business floor, I'm into it. Because if we find a door ajar and there's no cars in here, a lot of times without, without, it's a lot easier to wait for the custodian to get us into the rest of the building, to certain parts, maybe a lark, but we wanna be able to walk through the whole facility. Happened at the high school, a couple of times this past year, which we actually had breaks, we didn't find the actual rake until we got into the school with the custodian. So that could take four hours. I think that call, yeah, lasted three to four hours, by the time we were able to get through the whole school and figure out what exactly happened up at the high school this past year.
Right.
Overdose drugs and alcohol, thirty-five as of November thirtieth, suicide attempts are threats this year is way up, around sixty-two. Substance involvement alcohol, one hundred and eighty-seven, substance involvement drugs, one hundred and forty-three. This year, we started, we started last year about halfway through the year collecting opioids, it's a specific type of call. That may not be an overdose, it will be, be an overdose, or anytime we've had to deal with opioids, you know, as well, whether we, it's been an arrest where we found opioids on, on a person, we're up to thirty-two this year. And we decided to start tracking this past year for the first time, mental health, ill etiquette calls, you know, we had two hundred and fifteen. And that's the one where the fire chief mentioned, where we're up significantly, and we decided to keep track of it, because some of those calls can last anywhere from forty-five minutes to an eight-hour shift. You know, we've ended up having an officer with someone to get him into a placement with family members for a full shift, if not longer, and that, that takes, can take...
It's the biggest thing you do, too.
Right here, yeah, please.
So that the substance involving drugs, that's non-opiates, and then the group, the subtype is with opiates, yeah?
Correct.
And if you take all the substance issues together, it's up and to the right, it's, it's exponential growth. You just take all of those three and sum them together, it's off the charts. That's amazing.
Well, if you put them all together, it makes the mental health not look so bad, because the other thing is gonna shoot you, I mean, if you put them all together, they do shoot you.
The thing you look for is discontinuities, what's gonna break the organization, and what's increasing at a rate beyond the ability of the organization to deal with. I don't know if you have any comments to what, you know, what's the...
So, I'm gonna give you my, my personal view on the substance involvement drugs. Steve, they decriminalized marijuana a couple of years ago, and now they've made it legal for twenty-one plus. Quite honestly, we deal with marijuana with kids now in the high school on a daily basis. It's, they, they, a lot of kids, not all, just feel it's legal and it's okay to do. And we've had a lot of kids overdose on, on small amounts of marijuana, because they don't know what they're taking, they're taking, oh, they're taking little, uh, I'm sorry, uh, like, look like candy type of marijuana. They don't know the, how strong it is, or how potent it is. And quite honestly, it's, I won't wanna say it's rampant, but there's a significant problem in town with marijuana, and you, and it just seems to be, they think it's okay to do. You know, vaping's another, Erica McNamara will get into it much more in depth than I will.
Wow.
I just wanna point out on the mental health bill, the lady calls, and the suicide attempt related calls, and school, another, your request from other officer in schools, that, that, I assume that dovetails with, um, the schools' push for social emotional health programs that they have. I, I, reading a lot of the survey responses, some people didn't really understand the value of schools getting their social emotional well-being, but this sort of indicates that that it can go hand in hand, what you're doing, what the schools are doing, sort of, hopefully will combine to address these issues.
Correct, and the school resource officer works hand in love with the, with the counselors on the high school, including in-classroom stuff as well, and, uh, it's invaluable with, you know, trying to get through, give it best we can.
Chief, I even hesitate to ask, because I don't wanna kill you with statistics, but I'd be very interested to know kind of the rate of growth of that circumstance you described, incidents at the school, or students that are affected with either the situation you talked about, or any of the other substances?
We, I don't have...
Not today?
Yeah, it's, yeah, we could absolutely, probably, I'm sure with, from the school resource officer, we could put that down to something for you, absolutely, no, sure off.
And the resource, the second officer into the middle schools, is that planned?
Yeah, it wouldn't be, obviously, prim, I mean, be primarily, in my opinion, for the middle schools, but all schools...
But not limited to them?
Right, you know, we'd love to get back as much as we could into the elementarys, because we end up, you know, we end up in a lot of issues in the elementary schools with kids that are acting out because of things going on at home. You know, and then it, it just leads us to figure out where we can put the resources to help parents as best we can from our standpoint. All right. So domestic disturbance, as of this year, is actually up from last... So domestic disturbance as of this year is actually up from last year, down from two years ago. So the domestic disturbance is an actual, you, some of the calls is because there's an actual fight going on, with the verbal, physical, child calls, male, female calls, about their spouses, there's an actual physical or verbal altercation going on. Domestic disturbance is people coming in for advice, the police department are calling about, asking questions about how to get a restraining order, nothing that's ongoing at that specific second, but they're having a problem at home and, or, you know, with, or with the, or with the child, it doesn't have to do with the spouse, yeah, that's what I said, yeah, domestic assistance, that's the difference. Disturbance is what is going on, ongoing right now, the assistance part is when it's actually, they have a question about what's going on, or, you know, there's an issue at home with someone, and they want to know what they can do about it.
Sometimes graph two and graph three will eventually, might lead to graph one.
Absolutely, yeah, correct. All right, child custody exchanges, we just put that in there this year because, just to show you how many we do at the actual, the police station, you know, on a yearly basis, for families that actually have to come and exchange kids right in our lobby, our parking lot, and this shows you what's really going on. Two oh nine eight violations, delivery, restraining violation, direction down this year, which is a good thing, that's the amount we've had, which is actually low, which is pretty...
Chief, the child exchange, is that typically mandated by a document, or is that just as a matter of convenience?
It's, could be both, sometimes mandated by a document, by a court, because of one or the other spouse is unfair, what may happen if they, if they exchange at their home, it could be because of a, of a court order that's in the, in the, in the two oh nine eight paperwork, they say, they say that you, they want to exchange at a police station, so... And wanted guest calls, some calls because either it's a party, someone they've had a party, or, or they, they just have an issue with a relative or a friend that's over and they want them out and the person won't leave, so that's what, that's the threats. Harassment calls, suspicious person calls, suspicious motor vehicle call, that's just some of the calls because they see something going on in their neighborhood, they're not sure what it is, and they decide to give us a call. So, again, this is all information, wanted to really get down to, so we can show you what we're doing on a daily basis. Child neglect or abuse, fifty-one As is a, is a term used for, when we file paperwork with DCF, about a child, children, families. Two fifty eight E's are civil harassment orders, whereas if you have an issue with your neighbor, you've been harassed by, or a friend, and not a, someone you're related to by blood or marriage, you can get a two fifty eight E order. Welfare person checks, that's, that, those are, again, calls where some are caused about, they can't get in touch with someone, they're not sure, you know, where the person is, again, it can last five minutes to three hours, depending upon the call, what's going on. Some of those have had, some of those staff that have ended up in sudden death calls because they can't get in touch with someone for a couple of days, and we end up finding someone, we get to the house, it's had, it's, the domestic issues, it could be a variety of things with that, with that code right there. Missing persons, adult juvenile, it's pretty sophisticated.
Chief, for the welfare checks, is that mostly elderly?
I'd say the majority are probably elderly, but it could be, it could be any age, we've had, a lot of times, it could be, quite honestly, it could be a, a family member who just doesn't want to speak to another family member, and they won't answer the phone, and all of a sudden, we end up there, you know, listen, can you call your mother and just let her know you're fine, you know, we'll let them know you're fine for you, but that's, you know, you know, and hopefully that's what, all it is, you know, but you never know until you get there.
So you guys are in loco parentis more often than not?
Say, I'm sorry?
You guys are the local parent more often than not?
Yep. All right, so standard federal crime reporting, it's called NIGERS, national incident-based reporting, they, some of our, we, all of our calls are quoted, yeah, that was one of the trailer, it's considered in the federal, in the, with the state, with the feds, part one crimes, and these are basically, some of our calls we showed you above, we actually have more calls than to show you, they look like we have more in the town already than the feds, the feds have, you have to be at a significant level, say money-wise, for, for vandalism or a robbery, before they consider it a crime in their, in their terms, so I just wanted to show you, this kind of just shows you where we're at with the feds.
What is, what is the level for burglary?
Two hundred, two hundred and, two fifty, yeah, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Central vandalism, so we would take a report on all vandalism calls and investigate it, the federal government only wants to report over two hundred and fifty dollar charge.
Again, majority we are, are getting up to this year.
Is this data on the web, Chief?
It's not, it will be, we, I wanted to bring this here tonight first, before we put it up. We don't have a program that does it automatically, this is all done, I'm sorry, we do it automatically, but it's not something we just upload automatically.
Right, it's painful.
Pornography, that's specifically child pornography type of issues we've had to deal with. Sexual offenses there, since it appears to show you, we've had, there is it. Rape, sexual assaults, those could be, actually, they could be ongoing, majority of someone that comes in later on after something happened, you know, and again, those type of calls can be forty to sixty hours, investigations go in to each one, you know, one of our detectives, Michelle Howard, is a specialist in sexual assault investigations, and she spends hours upon hours interviewing people in court, out of court, with the DA's office, they, they have to, they do what's called a same interview, sexual assault interview with victims, which can last, you know, four to six hours, just the interview itself, then you have to go back and write up all your notes, the whole investigation.
Chief, did that one really go from zero to eleven, or is it, it wasn't deployed before, about to like...
Yeah, so we have, what happened was this past year, we have a different coding specifically now to use for that, and that's why it looks like eleven, I think we probably had two to three last year.
We had three last year.
Yeah, three last year, but it's just, we have new coding now this year with a new company, that we've kind of been, we took two companies, we merged them together this past year, microsystems and what's called DataViz, and it's made, it's fine to, and a better reporting, we've kind of been able to put on in the past.
So were there two minutes left or an eleven this week?
Correct. All right, detective division, that's just giving us a basic overview of the detective division, now the reports themselves. So this year, we're up to, actually, I checked with detective lieutenant before we got here, we're at a hundred and fifty-two so far as of the last thirteen days, so we are up above last year, but this was as of November thirtieth. Basically, any call in the department that goes beyond the patrol division, in other words, if an arrest is not made, a report not taken, that doesn't go any further, the detective follow-up on. We have two general detectives during the day, we have one that does, in other words, does prosecuting during the day, always over court, and then we have one night detective who works every night of the week, Monday to Friday, and basically, we follow up on, or, you know, try to get our own, more cases with drugs, or more cases with other issues that are coming up that, that didn't fall into, hold hands of patrol. These are cases, it says a hundred and forty-one, these are cases that usually can be anywhere from a day to weeks of, of investigation time that goes into each of these, each of these cases. The numbers may look low, but when it comes to the actual time that goes into these, it's unbelievable, because I worked for eight and a half years in detective, so that's definitely one of the more, have the serious parts of the job that you really need to follow up, do you really, do you raise your eyes, crush your teeth throughout for court, because almost every one of these cases is up in a court, it's more than a quarter mile.
Yeah, if a case comes up during the day requiring detective work for the day, the daytime, do they hand that up to the nighttime guy, or do they continue on an overtime basis?
Depends upon the case, if, so for patrol, so patrol officer goes to a burglary, initially, you know, and they get some evidence, detectives are called, called into the burglary, they do their thing, find out, you know, they're looking for whatever type of evidence specifically. For example, we had a case we just solved through DNA from a burglary on Woburn Street several years ago that finally came back, the perpetrator left a cigarette butt on the front stairs, well, so the detective gets there, says to the, to the owner of the home, smoke? I don't smoke. Anyone, anyone, you know, your house, nope, grab that, ends up being someone had broke into a house in a different part of town, but it took us almost six years through DNA to get, to get the person in, to actual, to actually, you know, investigate it more, person admitted to it, so, you know, you never know what you're gonna, you know, what you're gonna find, the person couldn't come up with a reason, they were in, that person steps six years ago, you know, so.
One more reason not to smoke.
Support services, support services, the safety officer, the safety officer's involved on a daily basis with town hall for a lot of issues when it comes to the design review team, they spoke about yesterday in, in Delisa's forum, also involved heavily with the DPW with signage, road signage, also, if anyone calls or complains about speed, parking problems or anything else, the, the safety officer is directly involved on a daily basis. The armor, the armored fleet maintenance officer, that person takes over all of our firearms, make sure we're trained in firearms, all of our maintenance of our, all of our cruisers to make sure that they're up to, up to speed, all the equipment that we have for the cruisers to make sure, and our equipment for our firearms, to make sure everything's where it has to be. And then the last person up there is the community service officer, and that's a position that, two years ago, we had a different person doing it, but they were working on a shift doing it, and it just, to me, when I became chief, I had talked to the town manager, it wasn't working the way I wanted it to be. So currently, the community service officer, as you've seen, she's very visible, we're big on the Facebook, we're big on the Twitter, we're big on the coffee, with the clock, she runs the RAD program, she runs the Citizens Police Academy, these are things that kind of fallen by the wayside that I brought back myself to the department in the last couple of years, and I, I really strongly believe in it, I'm, you know, people know I'm out there in the open myself on a daily basis, and I think it's, it's an invaluable part of the building trust in the capacity of the department with the community, I, I think she's, that's an invaluable position to have, you know, and I, I fought for that one, to get her, get her off of the patrol, off the patrol schedule, do it as a specific position, which has been, I think, I believe, very successful for the department. The parking officer, so, that's some of the, you get rid of the last one, we had the parking, the parking officer. All right, any questions about police?
I have two for you, Chief. Your department gets pulled in in some of the most challenging human circumstances there are, you've got children, you've got adults in a variety of states of dispute. Is there, is there a compensatory element to the budget in terms of, I couldn't do that work, just the emotional part of it would, I couldn't deal with it. Is there a compensatory part to how the budget deals with, you know, letting the guys wind down and kind of get it out of their system, or is it just part of the work and it doesn't bother them?
I think it's just part of the work, I'd say it definitely bothers people, I think this is the, the one thing we've had over the last probably year now to year and a half is, we've definitely gotten busier, and sometimes you go in at the end, and we usually have a little more downtime on shifts, we don't have it as much as we did, especially days in, in, so we work, especially three shifts, midnight to eight, which we call the last half, the day shift, and then what's called the first half, which is for, for the midnight shift, days and the four to midnight are definitely the, the business shifts in the department, although if a serious call comes in on a midnight shift, you know it's a pretty serious call, that's the other thing we have had, obviously happens, but, but sometimes these officers are out straight, you know, for the amount that we have working the shifts of times on the road, and I definitely notice when you speak to these officers, the downtime is not there like it used to be years ago, and it definitely, it takes some time, I mean, you can't just go home at the end of a shift and unwind as easily as you could ten years ago.
And then the last question is, in the Sanborn Street fire, I was there for about five hours that day, and I remember hearing that although it's an extreme circumstance, things like some of the battery operated equipment, you were running out of charge, you couldn't get back to the fact that the headquarters, because everyone's deployed. Is your expense budget covering some of the upgrades that you think you need for kind of extreme circumstances, is that already built in here as well?
Yeah, no, it is, and we've also, actually, the last few weeks, actually, we just, we just purchased about eleven more batteries, to be honest with you, for our portables, because, and to have more out on the road, problem is that you don't know when you go out there, how long you're gonna be, and you just try to get them out, like that day, we ended up finally getting someone back to the station to get more batteries and get them out to us, because it just, you know, it was, just the manpower, first, we needed everybody out there, and then we finally were able to get four additional departments around Woburn, Woburn, North Red and Stonem and Wakefield had come out that day to help us and assist me mutually, and once they came, we were able to relieve some of our officers that were on post from traffic issues, we were able to kind of be able to redeploy and get more help out to where we needed, we had more equipment to where we needed at that point.
And the last question, do you, can you speak to any new technology requirements this year that either extend the reach of the force, make their work easier, or make, make the work, is there any particular technology investment that you want to highlight, or it's fine to say no, I'm just curious?
No, it's okay, I'm actually, I'm talking to the units right now, Tom Manager, about tasers, we're one of only three departments in the area that do not have tasers.
Perfect example.
And it's just another tool on our belt to have, like anything else, you don't, it's a, it's a, a non...
Lethal.
Non-lethal weapon, and we'd like to have, it's an additional tool for us that if we deal with someone that, you know, we don't have to go with the, with the force, we'd like to have, and that's just something else we're talking with the units with right now.
What would you think the cost of that, if it were, just budgetary numbers?
They're about six thousand dollars for a taser, we're looking to get probably a half dozen, I'd like to have one to two out of a shift, you don't have to have every officer that I can see with one, but we'd like to have one or two out there per shift, that if we have, we need it, they're available. But we would train probably every officer in the use of them, which is an eight-hour training initially upfront.
And, and your armor room would take care of it, and there's a maintenance aspect to it, and I'm sure it's more than around to recharge it, you know?
Yes, you're right, correct. But that's probably, I know, the Tom Manager and I have been talking recently about the dispatch center and some of the equipment, and we may need to, to redo that, and I'm thinking about bringing it up closer than we were thinking, anticipated in the past, but that's about the only additional equipment that we see coming up.
Is that in here, any of, is that last asked?
That would be capital, that would be capital.
Capital, yeah, thank you.
Chief, I should have asked the fire chief this question as well, I just didn't think that, feel free to chime in, to, to get these additional five, at these five officers, we're more than likely, we need some sort of override, and so, could you speak to, and I'm not asking you to scare tactics or anything like that, but speak to what town writing is not get, we don't get these extra officers, or what they will, will get, maybe just a little more positive spin on it, with these five additional officers, so people can sort of understand what, what's at stake and what they're voting for.
So what you'll get is more coverage on the street for patrol, that's, that's, that's a major, and the school, and additional school resource officer for the schools, but the biggest part that we see coming out of it is more coverage on the street on a, on a daily basis that we, that we do use, you know, and that's where we see the, right now, need the help is on the actual street on a daily basis, and that would help us get to where we need to be. We just grown, we've grown so much in the last ten years, and we haven't grown the police department in size, and that's, that's an issue, I mean, the population of the town has grown significantly, and the, the police department has, in terms of offices, and that's what we could really use to help us use on the street on a daily basis.
It sounds like you'll also have police officers that are slightly less stressed.
Absolutely, it is, absolutely, it's a different generation now, too, I mean, like we've talked about, the millennials, it's just a different world, when I started, you worked every, yeah, you worked every detail in overtime you could to save money, but the kids nowadays that are coming on, it's just they don't, they, they have their time off, and it's just a different way of thinking than, I put it this way, we had to order people this year on four different days to work details, not even overtime, because we had certain projects going on in the town that we had to cover with officers that, just public safety wise, I haven't have lieutenants ordering these people into work, because there were certain projects going on that we needed coverage for, that, just to help with traffic control, period, you know, and that's never happened in the history of the regular police department, so that happened, and I take that very seriously, and I don't have to order people in the day off to come to work, but quite honestly, we do what we have to do to maintain the coverage for the town, we have to, the first thing is we have to protect this town, whether it's during traffic or whether it's on shifts, and assignments of minimum staffing, we have to have a certain amount of people in there, and we try and hire it overtime voluntarily, but if people don't want to come in, they're gonna come in all the way they are.
Chief, I'm sorry, I wanted to answer the same, same question, same truth as you did.
Sure, for us, it would be, it would be reduction in the overtime, and it would also be less stress on the, on the firefighters as well, and one of the things that we're seeing is, because the overtime level is, is what it is, that we're holding people over, we don't order them in, but we don't let them go home either, so. So, a little, it's a different approach, but achieves the same thing, unfortunately. And that's a big impact to the firefighters, because, you know, they had plans, they have family, they might have to take care of them, but, you know, we can't let them go. You know, we need them for that, for that staffing level, so. We've seen that increase this past year, even, even last year, but that's on the increase, and I'd like to see that go the other way, because it is an impact on morale. When somebody gets held, it's a, it's a real, it's a real negative impact.
I did notice that, that your estimated, guesstimate of the savings in overtime goes a significant way to offsetting the cost of the additional salary. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm just going to say real quick, I'm sorry I don't have my staff and study with me, actually, I have my copy, I don't have it for the screen that I can-
Well, we've seen it.
Correct.
We have it.
Okay, I was going to say, because one thing I will say to the fire chief and Monsieur was, out of the 22 comparable towns, population wise, as of 2015, Redding was, was below average, 1.66 officers currently, where the average is 1.8 from the 22 towns that we have. I just don't have it up on the screen.
And for those watching at home, and I'll thank Bill Brown for this, in 1967, with a town population, and I'm going from memory here-
Twenty.
I think it was 16.
Yeah, same number.
We had a force that was identically equal, police force, identically equal to the same size we have today. And I understand technology makes up some of that, cars make up some of that, but you don't make it all up on, on that. And that's just an amazing statistic, that we've, we've added to the town 40%, and we haven't touched our, our police headcount. It's amazing.
The thing that's kind of different about public safety than some of the other departments that we heard earlier, if you don't get your five officers or your four firefighters, when people dial 911, you're still going to come. The service is not going to go away. If Amy can't hire another librarian, there's certain programs she can't do. If Jean can't hire another planner, there's certain things that are not going to get done. You're still going to get everything done, but the, the difference is, is that's going to get done at a significant emotional cost, different time cost. You're not going to be able to attribute the fact that if something bad happens, because, oh, we didn't have that extra officer. You're still going to get it, you're still going to cover it, and you're still going to get it done. It's just that there are other costs that are, that are associated with that, that the public won't see. So, you know, there's a cost of doing nothing, and as much as there is a cost, obviously, of adding the officers to, you know, for, for coverage-
That's not a small cost either, the cost of doing nothing.
But that's also a cost that you can't quantify. Some people, like you read the survey, people say, well, I want to see what I'm going to get for that. Well, you know, you're not going to, you just can't quantify it in dollars and cents per se, right, about having one more officer or one less firefighter, right? Because the service is still going to happen.
But I think you could quantify it in terms of response time, if there were multiple ongoing incidents at the same time.
I think intuitively, you know, when you talk about, you know, what you show a voter for what they're, what they get for what they're spending. And I think that this is, frankly, I think it's a mistake that we made last time, and we knew it too late, that, you know, we know what an officer costs, we know what a firefighter costs. We can quantify that, you know? I go back to my favorite thing I always say, it's just arithmetic, you know? I mean, you take a piece of paper and you write down how much it costs, and you say to a voter, if you got one more police officer, one more firefighter, and that represented a permanent tax increase of $12, you'd say, oh, okay, maybe that's not so bad, because intuitively, they know what all of you and your teams do. I mean, in, look, we could put all the bar graphs in the world up. We know what you do, you keep us safe, you know? You make sure that, you know, when somebody's hurt, they get a response, and they get a, you know, a first rate response. Those are the things you guys deliver all the time. I think it becomes incumbent on us, in my opinion, you guys have made a clear case for, just with the statistics, for what needs to be done. And it becomes incumbent on us to demonstrate what that's going to cost and what that means to the average taxpayer.
And figure out how to do it.
And figure out how to do it.
I will say one thing, it'd be, some of the things you may not get is the proactive stuff, if we don't continue to grow, because we're just getting, the amount of calls that are coming in for service, the proactive things we do like traffic enforcement, we have people calling every day about speeding on their roads or stop sign, but we're just not going to have the time to sit and watch like we would, or we haven't had the time, like we have in the past, with the cost of service, because our-
Yet, you know what, I'll tell you, people, that's a really important thing to say. I mean, we're all monitoring, I mean, I'm sure everybody up here is busy monitoring six or seven social media sites where various people gather. That's one of the things they, they're not happy about. I mean, among a lot of things that people aren't happy about, but, you know, one of the things is, they're driving too fast, they're not behaving themselves courteously with their vehicles when they're dropping kids off, it's, I mean, and these are things that, by not doing what we haven't done, that's how you quantify the absence of you guys being present. And that really does matter, you know? It's real.
Questions, George? Sorry to make you get up.
George Caton, I'd like to pick up on the proactive bit, because you take the school resource officer, they're being reactive now, or they're simply a person reacting, and can't get in there and do training and help on drug issues, and have the special sessions for the students. I think that type of thing is what we miss.
Yeah, I will say this, we've had, I've had several chiefs say, almost, they can't believe the amount of calls we deal with in schools and the town of Redding with one person. It's just, you know, they actually say our officers that do are pretty amazing people, because we have one person, and they are going out straight from seven to one until three the afternoon, and then there's always a 2:45 on a Friday. One principal calls about something, and that person's here till six, seven o'clock at night on a Friday afternoon. That is how it is, and they're good, and they're fine, but it just, it happens all the time.
Well, the interesting thing about your bar graphs is, you look at the things that are related to the schools, and, you know, we know a lot of the drug issues, a lot of the, you know, alcohol issues, now they're not all, you know, juveniles.
Correct.
But there's a lot of them. And, you know, one of the things you're trying to help mitigate is that early onset, that, you know, the next resource officer makes a difference.
Right. And if it's not the kid themselves, what happens if they appear, they had an issue, and then we end up dealing with kids at school, on a disciplinary issue that kind of stems from what's going on home.
Chief, you said earlier, and it's worth repeating, that certain votes that occurred at the state level appear to have little or no local impact, but in fact, you see the impact here. You talked earlier about the legalization of marijuana in some towns across the state, but for commercial sale in some towns. There's a very measurable cost to youth, and it's being borne here by you gentlemen intervening to try to save somebody, or talk to somebody, or put them back on the right path. That's really hard to explain to people, that a decision made three years ago shows up as a change in number of incidences. You've done a great job to present that here, and we need to remind people that that's a cost.
And the other interesting thing that you brought up, and I think this is really important, and that is that you talked about how you guys are anecdotally experiencing kids with higher use of marijuana. It's legal, why, why can't I, you know? My parents are. I mean, that's real. And all you have to do is understand that that's a real thing that's happening, because you guys live with it, and then go back to the meeting that was so poorly attended in September, honestly.
The AR CASA meeting.
The message that came in that AR CASA meeting about the impact to the juvenile brain of all of these substances, we, we need more people to understand that. You're telling us it's happening, and, you know, we had experts backing up, you know, the problem, and the problem is very serious.
Any other questions from the audience? Yes? Come on up and use the mic, we have, this is a very quiet room.
Hi, Linda Phillips. As a town meeting member, one of the concerns I hear a lot is, in your study for staffing, did you ever, or how have you considered the impact on flags, in having an officer at a site for traffic control? Have you ever looked at other ways and means, similar to you have crossing guards from regular people, and they're trained in the community, and it's a part-time job? Is there any, have you ever looked into having part-time people work in traffic detail, so that the overtime would be reduced, and it would give some other people another job at less than what it costs to have an officer?
So, if I want to keep my current job, if I have to do that, that's going to be a big union issue, quite honestly. That's what that comes down to. That's an all-negotiated thing between both unions, both bargaining units, the patrol officers and the superior officers in town. And quite honestly, it's Massachusetts, the way the laws are set up, the only flagman that were able to be used was through the state, and that fizzled out probably a couple years ago now. Yeah, it didn't last long. Governor Deval Patrick had brought it in at one point, we saw it come in the Redding for about a day, and then that was it. Then it's just the rules that they put in the place were, where, they had to come and give, the police chief had proposed a plan every day of what they were going to do with flag, absolutely. And I think, quite honestly, I just don't see it happening like you'd want it to happen, because-
So like the power companies used to have their own people do it, but now it's all over the roof?
No, they, they ever did have their own people do it. The state tried to do it a couple of years ago, well, several years ago now, and it kind of fizzled quick. With, I think, and I don't want to speak out of term, but I think with the, with the way these states are set up, with how they pay their, their own flag prices, we're getting up to be, that's a state that's expensive enough to be a police officer, you get a trained professional compared to someone just waving a flag, quite honestly, out there in our opinion, you know?
Well, that, that helps me explain that, when someone brings it up. Town manager-
Yeah, I just want to add to that. It's actually not a lot of money in the Redding general fund, police department budget to pay for that. That's much more utilities. We pay as customers to the utility, but not as tax payers, just to make that distinct meaning. It's in other budgets, like the DPW has a couple of line items for details.
Okay.
You know, 12 grand here, 10 grand there, so that's real.
Oh, okay.
But it's mostly the utility companies, they are the driving companies that, but you're still going to incur that cost.
That's good to know. The second question is, I was on town meeting the first year we put the resource officer in high school, and at the time, it was presented, it was a joint partnership with the schools, and I'm sure it still is, how they work together. Also at the time, they were, the school paid for the hours they put in at school, and the vacation time, the schools are closed, in the summertime, the officers did regular officer work. Is that still the practice? Do you get, I don't see it in the school department budget, that they're paying for a resource officer, and is that kind of like just been decided forever, or is that something that you can talk about, that maybe they pick up some of the charges for that? Especially when you want to add another one, or maybe two?
So, since I've been here, the police department's always kicked up the, the school resource officer budget. Prior to myself, I can't, I don't know how it went back, I think it started in 2005.
So, I think what happened, Linda, because I was at, at Tom Town Meeting at that time too, and there was a, there was a grant, and it was a grant that might have come as a result of requests through the school department. But, you know, I, I think the first one to maybe even three years, I mean, there was a-
Seventy-five, fifty, twenty-five.
Yes, it kept going down. Because I do remember, frankly, at town meeting, when it was time for the town to, you know, appropriate the money, believe it or not, there were people that went, we shouldn't have that, we should lay that guy off. I mean, I remember the, I was incredulous at the conversation, to be honest with you. But, so I think what happened was, there was a school, there was a grant that came through the, through the, you know, the efforts of the school department, it wasn't really in their budget, I think it was, I think it was a grant, and I think it was a sliding grant, knowing that ultimately we'd have to, we'd have to absorb it, of course.
So, so then do, on vacations and summer, the officer becomes-
So, we hoped, this is what happened though, because the officer has to work so much for that nine or 10 months in school going on, actually, you start in August, because training started in August basically for the following year, so basically 10 plus months, seven and a half months. The only time that person really has time to take off is basically July. So that's the thing, I mean, which is just the way it is. I mean, they're kind of like a teacher that way, that they need, they need to be, they use their vacation time, and I limit it extremely during the school year. It's, you know, if it's not a vacation, that the kids are off, unless they were getting married, they're pretty much at work, you know? So, that's basically how it works.
Thank you so much. On a personal note, I'd like to thank you all for what you do, but I have an interest in YouTube, our TV show Hello Redding, and the town manager has kind of volunteered you guys to anticipate some time.
Bet you didn't know.
And I'd love to schedule that with you.
I was just getting it, I was going to tell you.
But, um-
Give us a call.
It's going to be basic, our performance review. But one of your representatives, Mr. Halsey, Mr. Ensminger, did speak to public safety, and they did share some of the information you had tonight. So it's actually section, section show four, and so you can go on YouTube and look up Hello Redding, and on section four, they talk about public safety to, to what you have tonight, but it would be, it would be really nice to have you guys come in too, and we can do that sometime after the holiday.
Give us a call.
We will, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes?
Anne Andrew from Bencom, thank you chiefs for the presentation. I heard you say that there isn't any downtime on the job to unwind and process what's happening. So I was just wondering if there are any mental health supports or resources that you refer officers to to help them process secondary trauma from the job?
Sure, so, so I don't want to be specific, I don't want to say there's no downtime, but it's not, it's not, it's definitely limited downtime. But, we've learned, here's the AAP through the town, the employee assistance program, which if an officer is having any issues at all, we would definitely refer the person to. But we also deal with peer, peer review as well, meaning that we have several officers out of department, in other departments, that are really good at coming in when we've had either a major incident, a major trauma incident, or, or that someone's just having something going on at home, a crisis at home, that we can, we can refer them to as well. Police are a unique group, and I think fire is probably the same, they, they really like targeting sometimes their own people, and we have actual officers, one in our own department, many in around, including Boston and state police, where we actually have a complete unit set up to help all our other officers as well for peer crisis intervention. And we've actually had, had to use them in the past, and it's, it's completely voluntary on the officer's part, but it's something that's very private, and, you know, they can go and kind of target people, and, you know, and kind of go from there, but I mean, anything we can do for the person will work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the public? Thank you, chief. Want to go onto dispatch?
Sure. Okay, dispatch, it's at 5.4% wages, it's the same staffing as the current year. It's, I'm sorry, it's 10 full-time dispatches and one dispatch supervisor, but the staffing level shows. Wages are at 5.9%. There's our luggage, dispatch is big luggage for every single call that we deal with. So this is where we are so far this year, about 32,000 cost of service, I'm sorry, luggageries. There's our stickers for this past year so far, I mean, access sticker, do so for the town. That was as, that was prior to the, to the $150 ones, that stopped on November 30th for these right here. So, dispatch is kind of a unique group. They, they answer, anyone that comes into the police station, 24 hours a day will be, will be met by a dispatcher. They basically are our forefront, our eyes and ears when it comes to the communicating with the public at the police station. So, we probably have between 50 and 100 people a day come into the police station looking for either an access sticker, to make a license to carry, which is a license to carry, fire round appointment, to meet with a detective, the directions, for a medical emergency, for a domestic issue. We've had, quite honestly, we've had, it's happened in the past, we've had people chased right into the police station, a road rage incident. Matter of fact, that only happened a couple of weeks ago on a, on a four to 12 shift, where a woman ran into the station, and a guy charged her right behind him, so, they, the, uh, off of the well. So, it's, you name it, we've seen it, but dispatch- But dispatches, yeah, they're at, they're the forefront when you walk into the police station. They really have a, the job has become so much more technical than it ever was, you know, computers with everything else, it's just, they do an amazing job, I can't speak highly, any more highly evolved than they do.
And the dispatch offices are armed, right?
No, they're not armed. They're completely, they're very uniform, but they're not armed.
I see. Thank you.
And they deal, no, just the police, it's the fire, it's the 911, it's a very involved job.
Any questions about dispatch? I just kind of showing up on a public record request, wanted to put a little speck of a holler. That has grown so much in the last year, is it the amount of work we have to put in to gather public records for people?
Before you leave, before you leave the dispatch, what was, I know you mentioned it a little bit earlier this morning, what's our real equipment situation there?
So, we've had the same equipment, it's been upgraded, don't get me wrong, but we've had the basic same equipment since the police station-
Well, I know there's software upgrades, you know, a lot of, you know.
So, yeah, so, some of the cabinetry in the dispatch, most of the cabinetry was actually a while away, we were back, when the police station was built, back in 2000, 99, 2000. It's, and I think IT's gone, I don't see cabinet number anymore, but we had, we actually had a meeting about it today, it's in need for an upgrade, it's getting significant.
By cabinetry, you mean the electronics and the radio switching, all of that?
Took the tin cans down.
Right.
No, there's still-
String's still there.
Kevin's, after speaking with Kevin at a meeting this afternoon, he just can't get any more wires into the dispatch center as is, and it's just, the way technology is growing, that it's just not working out the way we'd like it to.
Well, you know, it wasn't that long ago, when you had Dave's job, you and Jim were in to talk to us, I want to say, you know, maybe six months, it was Jim's last real visit to talk to us about this, and it was in the fall, I think.
It was the warning.
And it was a, there was, it was a warning about that exact thing, so this is not news. And I clearly understand that you've got manpower issues, you know, over equipment issues, the equipment seems to be working, but I, and again, that would be capital, that's not going to be, you know, out of budget, I'm guessing, right Bob? Yeah?
Yeah, I'll speak to it a little, the superintendent, myself, the facilities director have met on this behind the police chief's back.
Right.
And discussed the security issue.
Right.
Which you all know about. Redoing the dispatch center really is part of that process.
Yeah, okay.
So, as we discussed it, and as John will come in and describe next week, it's just a small piece of it, it made a great deal more sense for us to begin the whole process by addressing the dispatch center, rather than doing some other things, including equipment in there, and then someday, they'll let's rearrange the schedule.
Okay, so it's already complicated and networked.
Today, a number of us actually walked around the entire police station to understand operation, how the person, because I don't know all the details, and really tried to think about, what can we move where, and what makes the most sense, who works together the most. So, you know, forgetting who, what is there now, just what makes the most sense. And I don't, it takes some time for us to sort this out, but, you know, the dispatch equipment, 20 to 25-year-old, years old, is kind of remarkable.
Yeah.
The equipment's older than some of the police stations using it.
And it's in the capital, so if you want to more detail, I'll just-
Yep.
Thank you very much. Any questions before we put yes?
I just had one comment, I believe that we have officers in dispatch 24 hours a day.
Dispatches in dispatch.
Dispatch, sorry. So, I just wanted to say, I was in a neighboring community on like Saturday morning, and I walked in and I'm like, "There's no one here." And you had to pick up a phone and talk to someone, and it was so unsettling to me, and so I think it's such a priority that we have, people in that room, and that situation with the woman running from a guy chasing her from road rage, like, you're going to pick up the phone?
Right.
You know, there's a person right there that can see the urgency of that situation. So, I just wanted to say that I appreciated, I was just completely confused without someone in dispatch.
I'll tell you the truth, I was over there recently myself, and I know what you're talking about. I didn't know what to do when I got there, I had the person in front of me.
The community that will have your name in that store, yeah, so.
No, thank you, I completely understand that, thank you.
I can go you one better, I'm having breakfast tomorrow with this fellow, but I want him down to present the interview. The cell phone is not far from us, the closure's on the weekends, their police station, he knows, he knows who it is, sir. There's still officers driving around in cars, but there's no one in the police station. There's no one, so think about that.
Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you everyone, thank you.
Thanks to all of you.
Thank you all. Will we take a few seconds here to get some circulation in our, clear the room? Eric, you want to take it away?
Sure.
You're on.
Oh, I'm on, okay. Erica McBarrett, the director of the Reading Coalition Against Substance Abuse, thanks so much, I know it's getting late, so I'll try to be as brief as I can. I'm just here to talk a little bit about what our CASA does, how we work with our police department, our town, and our schools, as well as our librarians and all of our different town staff. We have a lot of different partnerships that make up the coalition itself. We are currently grant funded, I'll talk a little bit about that, and then talk about what it means when the grant funding is completed. So, our history, we were actually a coalition that was created at the urgency of our local residents and citizens. There was an investigatory committee that was put together by the selectmen, and we were actually formed as an organization in 2006. We chose to partner with the town, so we have a memorandum of understanding that allows us to operate within the confines of the police department, with our fiscal agent as the town of Reading, and then we have a number of different program partnerships with the schools and other town entities. Our goals are really pretty simple, to establish and strengthen local collaboration around the issue of substance use and abuse, and really to increase local efforts to support and reduce the onset of youth substance use, so that we can delay or avoid young people developing the disease of addiction later in life. Our leadership, basically, there is a board of directors that meets on a monthly basis, we have 26 members that represent a lot of different segments of the community, there's 12 specific sectors that we have to have on board. Those include faith leaders, town liaisons like our selectmen, our town manager, police chief, as well as parents, people who have experience in the issue of substance use, as well as prevention folks, people who work with recreation, our school committee. And then we have laypeople who are citizens or residents who have an interest or want to support what we're doing. We have two people who are part of our board of directors, we have Pat Shannon, who's our president, who's here, as well as Lain Webb, our vice president, they're, they represent the coalition as parents. And then we also have Sherry Van Den Necker, who's a parent representative as well, and they really represent the interests of whatever age their child is at. And that information is very helpful, because kids need different things at different developmental levels. We also have a number of regional collaborations, we work with the Mystic Valley Public Health Coalition, that is Medford, Malden, Melrose, Wakefield, Reading, Stonon, and Winchester. We get enormous amount of resources through that partnership, we meet in a monthly basis, sometimes more than monthly. We put together a lot, a lot of larger projects. One project is our bathroom safety project, which educates people on public restroom safety related to overdoses. In Reading, and around us, surrounding communities, there's been a number of overdoses in public restrooms. We've had 22 restroom incidents in Reading involving overdoses, where a person goes down. So, it's very important for people who work in those businesses to know what's safe, how to react, how to handle it, what, you know, calling 911, of course, and getting, making sure that fire is there to administer Narcan, but also not to touch the trash, not to touch things around the person, because we don't want someone to get exposed either to sharps or also to some of the materials such as fentanyl, which can be absorbed through the skin.
That 22 is this year?
Not this year, that's overtime. So, we've looked at overdoses and then looked at what locations they've occurred in, large amount of overdoses occur in residences, but we've had, we've also had a number occur in public restrooms, gas stations, convenience centers, Dunkin' Donuts, Starbucks, all those places. And that is mirrored across our other seven communities that we work with, they're in the same boat as us. So, together, we put together a bathroom safety program, and we have been doing education around the region around that. We also work with the Eastern Mills Sextuistic Attorneys Opioid Task Force, that's a monthly group, it's much larger than the seven communities, I believe there's about 26 communities represented. We're pooling resources, trying to strategize around the issue, not just of opioids, I mean, we are in the midst of an epidemic, it's not an opioid epidemic, it's an addiction epidemic. So, it's much bigger than just opioids, and it affects people beyond the person who's using, and affects the grandparents that are now raising children, it affects babies being substance, babies being born, substance exposed, it affects children who are exposed to a parent's overdose, so it's very far-reaching, and it requires all the public resources that you just saw from our police and our fire, in terms of medical responses. Not to mention the emotional support that families need in experiencing what's happening with a family member. And then we also work with our regional police versus assessment team, which involves Woburn and Winchester, and some of their hospital resources. Our funding history, we've raised a lot of funding through our grants, we've been pretty successful with that, about one and a half million in terms of grant funding. With that grant funding, there always is something that you have to be able to put in, and that is in-kind support through your town or through your other partner agency. So, the town has actually contributed about 817,000 in in-kind resources, that's providing a space and a place for us, that's all of our financial support that's provided through the town accountant, as well as all of the support the town manager provides. And then being part of the coalition, there's a cost to that, and it requires a lot of support of many different departments and entities. We also are currently funded under the last five years of a 10-year grant, so we are nearing the end of our 10 years of funding, and we're no longer eligible to apply after the 10 years. The goal is to be sustainable or to be able to manage once the grant is over, and they expect you to be well-integrated into your town or city system by the time the 10 years is ended. So, the hope is that we would become part of the town budget, that's something that, you know, will be up for discussion as you move through that budget period, but for right now, we are currently fully grant funded. And the funding is 125,000 a year. How it works, there's myself and a point six person, Julie Andy Angel, she's our part-time outreach coordinator, she's also a licensed alcohol and drug counselor, so she's got some really fabulous expertise. We work together as a team, as well as working with our board members and partners in the schools and town. I spend a lot of time doing public speaking. In the last year, I've spent about half of my time doing public speaking engagements, either working in the classroom, speaking for groups, working with parents, hosting events. We also do a lot of data collection and analysis. National data's great, state data's sometimes helpful, local data is invaluable, it tells us what is happening. And there are many pieces of data that I think for our police officers, that they don't always have the time to really look at and study, and that's part of my job, is to look at what's happening with every substance use incident, and see what are the resources going into it, how could we prevent, intervene, address in a different way. And a lot of that study has turned into programming. So, for example, in looking at the increase in mental health calls, we anticipated that wrote a grant, brought in mental health first aid training with our, with our public school system, and we were able to train 600 people, but as part of that, we were also able to train all of our police officers. Half of their training was focused on helping them respond to public incidents involving mental health crisis. The other half of the training was focused on their own response to trauma, and that someone brought up the idea of what kind of resources are there in terms of that, it's a very stressful job. And so, a lot of the mental health training is also focused on helping them manage some of the stress that goes on. Basically, we're town employees, we're cited at the police department, we're adjacent to the detectives division, we work very closely with them. I spend about half my time out and about in the community, that's either in one of the schools or at meetings, but a lot of time at the police department. The social norms that we focus on trying to address, we have some positive social norms that we want to continue to nurture and keep in our community, these are, these are norms that came out of needs assessments that we've been doing over the last 10 years. What we've determined, that there's some norms that keep and protect our community moving in a positive direction. One is that there's enormous opportunity in Reading for most young people, there's a lot to offer if they can take advantage of it. Most young people do not use substances, although we see a lot of the statistics showing there's concern, not every young person is using, in fact, the majority of young people are not using substances. Most young people do feel connected to our community, and that's because of the work of the schools, it's because of the work of the library, it's because of all of the different ad hoc groups that we have, Little League, and all the other supportive services, our recreation department. And then most of our young people are pausing to think about what is the impact of their choices on their future, on their current situation. On the flip side, the negative and kind of pervasive negative norms that we deal with is that we do have access to substances. Young people have access to prescription medication, they have access to alcohol, more and more they have access to marijuana, particularly synthetic marijuana, which is sold online, and you can get it in head shops, it's sold as non-edible products, but you can inhale it. We also have issues with generational amnesia, that's a little term that our team is trying to kind of address the fact that once we get to adulthood, we kind of forget what it was like, when you're in your teens, and how challenging it is, and how intense it is, and how difficult it is to sometimes break away from what the group is doing and kind of make your own decisions. We also have dealt with an enormous amount of false sense of protection. We find that not just amongst our young people, but amongst our adults. Living in a community that is, you know, considered to be safe, people often don't anticipate that bad things can happen to them, and substance use knows it can affect anyone. And that's, you know, that's a really important thing for every family member, every person reading, to have a conversation about the issue of substances, because it's something that can happen to any hundred dollars of your background. And then the style of use amongst the young people that are using substances, they're using heavy, they're using early, and they're using frequently. And that's where the concern comes in, is they're not having, you know, a glass of wine and talking about craft beers, they're binge drinking, they're getting to the issues where we see alcohol poisoning that the fire department has to respond to, or we see issues with kids getting sick, people passing out, not calling 911. So, there's other things that happen with the style of use that's concerning. In terms of access, one of the ways that we've tried to address it is with our medication safety program. We are trying to reduce poisonings in the home as well as access to medication, which can become addictive over time. So, if you look at when we started the program in 2009, 29 bottles got dropped off, and this year, or last year, we were at 6,690 bottles. It's about three times the medication that we've collected since we started the program.
That is, that is not cumulative, that is per year.
Per year, yep.
Stunning.
It's, it's a stunning amount of medication, and the medications that we get in are morphine, codeine, oxycontin. About 75% of what we get in are narcotic products. And we've seen bottles of, liquid bottles of morphine, fentanyl patches, everything you can imagine, that could be very dangerous to the young person or a child. So, we appreciate so much when people bring their stuff in. We also see things going back many, many years, when people maybe get into a home and they clean out stuff, or someone has passed, we've seen things from 1920. Things in glass bottles, potions, all kinds of stuff. The oldest thing we saw was 1920.
Doctor Jackson's elixir.
In pharmacies you've never heard, so it's been, it's interesting. We also introduced dissolvable pouches for folks that maybe are homebound or can't get out to drop off their medication. These are pouches that you can pour the bottle of pills into, you pour a little bit of water in, you rub it together, it dissolves the product, and you can no longer use it to get high in any way. So, what that means is it also dissolves in a way that you can put it into your trash, whereas we don't recommend you put your pills in the trash, because it's an area where people could dig through them to get the pills, and they also go into our water system. So, if you could imagine three tons of medication that we've diverted from our water system, that's pretty impressive from an environmental standpoint, as Andy knows how important that is. An enormous amount of diversion of access, which we're very proud of. But that program requires a full-time police officer to be monitoring the drop-off box, we have to count it on a weekly basis, we have to bring it up for disposal, it has to be witnessed by a full-time police officer. So, the destruction of the actual pills, we have to watch them go into an incinerator, I have to be present, the detective has to be present. So, there's a whole kind of chain of custody that happens with the drugs, that's very important from a public safety perspective, as you can imagine. But, very valuable program. From a connection standpoint- From a connection standpoint, as you saw with the mental health responses that we've seen for our fire ops, uh, excuse me, our firefighters as well as our police officers, it's a huge area of concern. We've tried to introduce some opportunities for connection. It's very difficult sometimes to access mental health services if you don't know what you need or you don't know what your insurance will cover. There's also sometimes a shortage of mental health providers in your particular area of interest. So for primary care providers, there's about one in 100 for primary care providers. For mental health providers, it's one in 478. So when you're looking, the pool is smaller and then their expertise is even more specialized. So someone might be great with someone who's, you know, 12 and under with anxiety issues. Someone might be great in another area. So we partner with William James Interface Referral Service. They have a phone helpline where we contract with them. They answer the phone. It's either a licensed clinician answering the call or someone who's training at the doctoral level. They take your information. They find out what you're looking for. They do an intake. And what they try to do is matchmake with what the appropriate service might be. So they call you back in a couple of days or a week with three matches. Person that will take your insurance, has open appointments and meets the needs that you requested. Sometimes people will want a female, someone who is in the spreading stone area, those types of details. Since we started the program back in November, we've had 60 cases that have been able to then match with services. That's from November 2016 to June. We will have more data coming in, but this is what we have for now. And when people call, they usually share what their most pressing concern is or what they're calling for. It might be my child is experiencing anxiety or I'm experiencing depression, whatever it might be. Or I'm not sure, we're just having some struggles. So you can see from the charts, there's a lot of anxiety, family-related, social issues, substance use. And then on the bottom is a number of other issues that come up, things like cognitive impairment, things about trauma, self-injury, veterans issues, grief, end-of-life issues. So, you know, it really kind of runs the gamut. For people in Redding, anyone can use a service. You don't have to be in the teen years. You can be a parent of a younger child. You can be an elderly person. Doesn't matter what your age is. Everyone in Redding is eligible. And you can see from the amount of calls, it's been very well received. And the way that we fund this service, we have partial grant funding and then we also got support from the Redding Hospital Trust Fund to help support a portion of that. And that's been extremely helpful. Anxiety was such a big issue, we actually hosted a special author and speaker back in November to come in and talk about the issue. We had 300 people come out to the schools to hear that presentation. So it's a really powerful concern, but it's information that we wouldn't know unless we were doing the service and seeing kind of what people are looking for in terms of need. We also offer a number of different programs. Youth Mental Health First Aid, which is one of the programs I mentioned that we offer to our officers, as well as to our librarians, our school department. I can't say enough about the work that we do with our school department. I meet with John Darty, our superintendent, on pretty much a weekly basis on a number of different projects. I work very closely with our athletic director, our principals for middle school, high school, as well as the elementary folks. We do a lot of work together. One of the biggest projects we've been working on at the high school level has been Esper, which is screening, brief intervention and referral to treatment. There's a state mandate that requires that you now do screening in at least two grades. So we've been helping them roll that out. There's our CASA staff person. Actually, both of us are present during screening. It takes about six to seven weeks. Juliandie is on hand to handle anybody that might come out of screening showing some concern. So as a licensed counselor, she can meet with them and talk with them. And then I'm also there to do data entry, which is required by the state. And then our clinical screening is done by our nurse. That project right now is in its first regular year. We did a pilot last year and so, so far we've screened 600 young people. We also operate a juvenile diversion program with our Redding Police and our District Attorney, a chemical health education program with our high school. Since the school year started, we've had 12 referrals from the high school for the chemical health education program. The majority of that is for vaping, so we're seeing most, most of our issues right now are with vaping and nicotine and marijuana. We also tried to address the issue of generational amnesia with our Hidden in Plain Site Project last year at the police department. In our community room, we set up a teen bedroom donated by the Mission of Deeds, which was awesome. They brought it all in and set it up for us. And then we hid some items around the room, invited parents to come in to kind of see if they could spot what the issues might be, to spot if your child might be using. And that was really well received. We had 130 people walk through. The YMCA helped co-sponsor it. They brought in a lot of parents of younger children, which was really great. We got to do a lot of education, not just around the substances, but smartphone safety, you know, parenting strategies, all kinds of different things came up. And also brought people into the police station for, you know, more of a proactive concern rather than coming in for something that's upsetting.
Did you happen to videotape that so that it has a light?
It's not videotaped, but on our website, the full exhibit is there. You can click through the bedroom. So if you go to the our CASA website, which is a link off of the Redding Public Schools website, you can go through the whole bedroom.
What was the average parental grade?
Um, it was really a good cross-section. I thought-
Sorry, how did they do? What was?
Oh, um, no one got all of them. I would say about, they got about half. There were 20 items hidden. People would find it, but they didn't know what it meant. So there was that. You know, a lot of people could find, like, like for one example, there is a deodorant that has a hide in it. So it looks just like a regular speed stick and the bottom comes out. So they, you know, it just looks like deodorant. So unless you knew to kind of play with it, you wouldn't know. So there's some items that are tricky and then some that are not as obvious, like a pen cap or a pencil that the eraser is pulled out. Sometimes that's used for self-injury. So there's some things that you wouldn't know unless you have an opportunity to talk with someone who's familiar with teen behaviors. So we had a lot of good conversation around what does the object mean, why won't you find it, what are they use it for?
That's all on the website?
That's all on the website, yep.
On the topic of the website, do we still have the link?
Yes. So if you go to the town website, there, we have a page and the link to the larger website is there.
And you know where I'm going?
Yep.
You know, because I, I feel so strongly about the most recent guests that we had in town. Is that a continuous loop YouTube?
Yes, so we have a-
You think it would make some sense maybe to split the two of them? So, you know, I know people are busy. 20 minutes here, 20 minutes there.
We have the YouTube video of Dr. Ruth Pody, who was a family medicine physician and addiction specialist, come back in September for our annual meeting and we were able to videotape that with the help of RCTV. And there's two major presentations, one from District Attorney Marion Ryan and one from Dr. Pody. And we've noted on the, on the website where their presentation starts. So if you want to kind of juggle to 26.5, it tells you where they are.
Because I did talk to RCTV about that. They said they would be happy to separate them to make them more user-friendly. It's something we're thinking about if you'd like. They're prepared to help us with that.
Right.
So those messages both were so powerful and they weren't redundant in any way.
Yeah, they both came out-
A message, but I mean, you know-
From different perspectives, yeah. If you haven't seen Dr. Pody talk, there's also, for anyone that has children at the high school who are participating in activity, whether it's drama or a sport, there's a Dr. Pody link through when you sign your participation form. And that presentation is also very important, very powerful. If people haven't had a chance to click on it, please click on it. It's worth your while. Some of the issues around style of use, obviously one of the biggest changes we've seen in opioid use has been the introduction of synthetic fentanyl. So fentanyl that's being illegally produced, not pharmaceutical grade, but very powerful. We see some of it coming out from different countries. We also have seen fentanyl in the form of, it looks like a Park 30 pill, a Percocet 30, all kinds of different variations. But what fentanyl means is it's very powerful. So 80 to 100 times more powerful than what you would find in an oxy. And that has increased with the level of overdoses and with the level of our EMS responding because they may deliver more than one dose of Narcan to bring a person back. And sometimes you can't get a person back when they stop breathing. So it's, it's serious stuff. It's something that we have to take seriously and things are always changing. So that's why having a drug detective assigned to the FBI is so critical. It's why having a night detective is so critical, having a school resource officer on the ground, having an additional school resource officer. I probably spend about, with our school resource, about 30% of our time is spent together. We do a lot of work together and so much of that is communication, talking, sharing information, helping with cases, doing education in the classroom. Having an additional person would be really, really powerful for the middle school and the elementary level. You guys were great in helping us proclaim recovery month by having us do the proclamation for the town back in September. We had six events that month. One of them was a candlelight vigil, which we held at the high school. It was the first time we did a candlelight vigil in Redding for opioid overdoses. We had about 75 people come. It was a really beautiful night. Had family members who've lost people who live in Redding and they were very thankful to have the opportunity to, to share their stories, but also to just have the town recognize it in a more public way. And then we also did some great work with our local churches, First Congregational and Old South, created blankets for babies and children who are exposed to opioid trauma. When people witness an overdose, one of the interventions that around our region, the Middle Sex District Attorney has been trying to introduce is to, if a child witnesses something, to offer a blanket because it's a source of comfort and it kind of helps with the trauma. And so we collected 54 blankets during the month of September that were all handmade, really beautiful. And those will be shared with children who are exposed to opioid-involved trauma. We also were part of Jams for Jake, which some of you were able to attend and thank you so much for that. Jams for Jake grew out of our love and care for a young person that we lost back in June. He was 24 years old, a really fabulous musician. And his friend group came together and worked with our CASA to develop this really spectacular musical festival on a freezing cold day in November. They're hoping for warmer weather next year and at a different time of year. The town was really fabulous in supporting their efforts. They put it together in a very brief amount of time. I think it was just a couple of months lead time and our police officers were really supportive. But it was a really spectacular way to address some of the grieving that they were experiencing as friends and to turn that into something that Jake would have been really proud of, to have his name be part of it and his family to be part of it. The other piece of it was getting the word out to people in their care group about Narcan, about recovery, about the resources that we have in town. We had a number of people came up and thanked us for being part of it. We had grandparents who were raising their grandchildren come up and talk to us about what they're dealing with. People who've been brought back by Narcan from our firefighters and how much they appreciated that. Because our firefighters and our police officers see people sometimes at their worst, in their most vulnerable positions. And sometimes they don't get to see the person when they're well. And sometimes I get the opportunity to talk with people as they're in recovery and they're working through those things. And I can't tell you how important that, the services are that they provide and also the importance of the seconds. So if there's a 50-second difference in the response time, that matters in terms of someone's life. And when you hear people's stories about how important it was that someone came to their aid, I don't know if you can quantify that. So with that, my contact information is there. I'm happy to provide more details on our budget and kind of how we do everything. But just thank you.
Thank you, Erica. One, one question for you. Much of what you've done, you presented here represents direct contact with the affected populations. The portion that we're dealing with parents, do you think we're, do you think we're doing enough to educate parents for what to look for? You mentioned a vignette about the sample bedroom. That was really cool. It strikes me that that's probably something that we might be able to do more of and maybe get more eyes on the street looking for this stuff, because you're dealing with the consequences of it. They may be able to deal with early symptoms of it.
Right.
Is there, is there stuff there that you could, you can think about, more programmatic coverage you can think about? And might we consider augmenting this presentation with maybe that, that view of it at some later date?
Sure. You know, we definitely will be offering it again. We try to offer different programs that bring people into that world of kind of understanding what's happening. I do a lot of PTO visits. I do a lot of small group work with parents as well as running the Mental Health First Aid Program. In that program, we also talk about signs and symptoms, not just of substance use, but co-occurring issues or other mental health issues. One of the things that we see very often is a young person self-medicating with marijuana, alcohol or nicotine when they're really suffering from depression or anxiety. So that's a lot of the work that I'm doing is also trying to help parents kind of tease out, okay, what might this mean and how do I get to the right service? And that's where interface comes in and working with our partners comes in. So programmatically, we're always looking for new opportunities. I will say, you know, we're a small team, me and Julie, and with the current program we have, we do, we do a lot. We kind of touch about 6,000 or 7,000 people a year in the work that we do. We always like to do more. That's partly why we partner with our regional partners. We try to offer some programs on a larger scale as a region. One example is our regional partners put together a great workplace summit at Tufts and we were able to take that project and bring it to Redding in a smaller form with our local Chamber of Commerce. So we try to do as much as we can by kind of building off the capacity of our regional partners. We are going to be doing a special parent campaign focusing on substance use with our regional partners that we're rolling out in January.
Thank you. Any questions from the board, Barry?
So Erica, you said that you're on the sort of tail end of your grant. So I couldn't remember, was it 2019? So basically-
Yeah, so September of 2019.
Is this fiscal year we're okay?
Yeah.
But next fiscal year, we're on our own?
Yeah. Yeah, it kind of crosses the town fiscal year with the grant fiscal year. So we end September 30th of 2019 and that would be three months into the town fiscal year. So we have to plan ahead for that.
So the delta of what is not funded by the grant, how much is that assuming the level?
Um, it'd be about- Yeah, a little bit less than that.
So it would be an additional 150,000 that you'd have to find either from, you know, contribution from the town or other types of fundraising? Are there any efforts being made? I know that there was a long-term grant. I think it was from the feds, maybe? Am I wrong or?
Yeah.
So are there, are there other grants that, you know, maybe not specific to running the entire organization, but maybe pieces that you've identified that, or other types of fundraising that you thought-
So we're looking at all of that and more. I will say there's very limited, limited funding for prevention. People don't like to pay for something that they can't exactly see and that's one of the challenges we have.
We'd rather pay five times the amount for the cost of-
Yes. I can explain it to you, but, but it, from a funding perspective, it can be difficult to access that money. What we're seeing at the federal levels, they are rolling out some smaller grants. We will be able to apply. You have to meet a minimum level of opioid impact in your community. We actually do exceed the level, so we would be qualified. But it's a very small funding pool, so we're not sure what our chances are there.
Are there chances for like regional, I mean, basically I saw one of the slides that there was 150 deaths in seven, eight town areas.
Yeah, so the regional project will continue to be funded for the next three years. We don't receive any direct funding, but we receive a lot of resources. But it requires me to be, be part of that and Juliandie to be part of it in order to get the most bang for your buck. But, so the regional grants and the state grants right now, they're not funding individual coalitions. They're funding regional partnerships with a lead agency. Medford is our lead agency for that. There are smaller pockets, Senator Lewis has put in some initiatives related to the marijuana. Cannabis Control Commission, that some of the funding should be going into a prevention trust related to coalition work. We're not sure how that will shake out and what it would look like and how you might apply for it. There are some other funding that we have looked at also to help our officers, to help with the mental health issues. But any grant that you, that you go after, you're expanding service, you're not maintaining service. So anything that we try to get, we have to do more than we're currently doing. So to get funding to just sustain who we are, that doesn't exist. That's the tricky bit.
Family foundations, none of that?
There's a little bit. There's a little bit. But we're talking, you know, under $5,000 for a lot of those. Because of the small part of, we're a very small community in comparison to some of the other high-needs areas.
We have questions from the board.
Yeah, I, when you said the 50-second response time can make a big difference, I just want to be sure that I'm connecting the dots correctly between what you, that comment and what chiefs are asking for. Is it safe to say that adding more staff to police and fire will help? I don't want to say this without being overly dramatic, but help reduce response time to keep it?
That would be an operational question for them. I mean, I know that we have a pretty spectacular response time compared to other communities. But I, what I do know is, you know, there are issues with getting through town. There's issues with people moving for them to get through town. There's all kinds of issues. So the more staff you have out on the road, you know, particularly for the officers, I think is helpful. Having two SROs, we can mitigate and avoid a lot of issues by having the SROs because they're very, both are very proactive. The community service officer is extraordinarily proactive and she and I, and the chief are working on a project that would bring in more crisis intervention support into the department. But all of that requires patrol to be sufficiently staffed in order to be able to do the other pieces. So like the chief said, having more staff allows me to do the proactive work, the prevention work and the intervention works. And on the fireside, I would leave that to the chief, you know, to address. But from our perspective, from the ability to respond to overdoses, they need it. They need it.
I could have, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
I could have one last note.
Yes, sure.
I would like to open it up to the board of selectmen, anyone on FinCom. If anyone would like to do a ride-along with one of our officers, some of, some of you, you know, someday, feel free to get in touch with myself or the deputy. with myself or the deputy and we'll set it up in a couple of hours, just to see what we do. Feel free, just give us a call and we'll gladly set it up for you. Okay?
Thank you very much for the offer. Erica, one more question before you leave. I'm still struck by that, maybe it's just this aha moment as a parent, you know, some of this I lived through with my own kids. And it really was this moment of recognizing that what I was seeing wasn't what it was. I had to see it in its real form. And now, looking back on it, I really wish there was a moment to explain to parents systematically what's going on. Have you contemplated, I know it's all tied to staffing and manpower, but is there an opportunity during Parent Teacher Week or any of the parental meetings in the school when you have a whole roomful of parents to kind of do it in the most efficient manner? Is that even an option?
We have talked about that. You know, it's a tricky thing. There's enough anxiety and worry about the transition that's happening usually for most kids that we try not to pile on too much more to that. But, we are looking at different ways that we can. We've done coffees with parents, we've done some morning events, we've done evening events, weekends. We've tried to piggyback on any major community events. But, it is tricky. The school events in and of themselves are pretty well-packed with a lot of material. We do get invited into orientations and different things like that to show that there's resources for young people and for parents. We also offer an online parenting program called Active Parenting and we've taught that program as well. So, there's a lot of opportunities, but with any opportunity, it requires some time on the parent's part. And what we've found is people are so stretched and so busy that it is difficult for them to get that time. That's why we encourage people to visit the website. There's a lot of resources there that you can do at your leisure. Give us a call. Julianne is really great at troubleshooting issues in terms of if you tried X, it hasn't worked, let's try Y. There's all kinds of different ways that we can support families in the community. But, I appreciate the feedback and we'll look.
Wouldn't you agree that, you know, time is one of them, denial's another?
Denial's a huge piece and readiness to address the issue. So, it's not just denial, but it's also coming to that, you know, it's like you've got to be ready to pull the trigger. You know, you've got to be ready not just to move forward with services, but you've got to be ready to move forward with boundaries. You've got to be ready to move forward with what you're going to withhold. And that is very difficult for all of us because we emotionally are so connected to our children. And even parents of adult children, they struggle with it. It's very difficult. The behavior of someone who is in the active disease of addiction can be atrocious. It can have enormous impact on their loved ones. But, they're a person who's suffering from a disease and so it's very difficult sometimes for the family inside what's happening with the disease to take a step back and figure out, what do I do? And so, it does require a lot of support and willingness to kind of cut through some of that denial and kind of develop a little bit of that readiness to really move forward. And we have people who call, you know, 10, 12 times before they're ready to go to a meeting, before they're ready to, you know, bring in an interventionist or, you know, different strategies that might work. Or, you know, a lot of people benefit from 12-step, which is free and available in our community and around the country. Recovery works. The relapse rate for substance abuse recovery is the same for diabetes and heart disease. So, it does work, but it does require people to accept that there is something going on. And that's the tricky bit. That's the tricky bit.
Any questions for the audience? Yes. One of them.
Julianne Webb, precinct one again, and Vice President of RACASA. So, I just really wanted to say that the, I've been at RACASA since the bile was first formed and then I've been on the board, I think, for at least the last 10 years. And I think one of the differences that I hope I'm actually seeing right now is that maybe five years ago, what would happen is there would be an incident in the community and people would get extremely upset and say, you know, what is RACASA doing? You know, they aren't doing anything. Why did this happen? And I think that we are seeing in the last maybe just two years or so, getting some traction about the proactive measures and all the different ways that Erica just talked about, that she is out in the community and working with the schools and out with the parents. But, I think the biggest thing is, on the survey, it was how do people get their information, you know, from their neighbors, from talking to each other and maybe, you know, some of those social media pages. But, they basically said from my neighbors. And I think what's critical is that all of us, you know, are able and quick to say, RACASA has that resource, go to the website, go to Erica, go to the police department, call Julianne. These are resources that are here. And I think we're finally getting a little bit beyond that inertia in terms of people recognizing the resources are there, but it's continual. So, I think the issue we see is, as we look down the road in the two years and three years, we have to make a decision as a community, how are we going to continue to want this resource? And so, if our community is talking about an override and this budget gap is going to be within the period of that potential override, I think that's where it's important to be, you know, understanding what that financial need is going to be and how would we plan to factor that in. So, I just want to highlight that point. It's such a clearly valuable and indispensable resource and we'll thank Erica and Julianne for all that they do because they're pretty incredible.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Yes?
I just wanted to say also that you gave a presentation at Parent University. And so, that's, I think, a really good forum for getting to reach the family community you were speaking of, John. And when there's a lot going on that day, so I think that was a great draw for parents because they could go to a bunch of different things. And that can be a very community-oriented program as well, not only for parents, kids in schools. So, I hope everybody will come next time. So, I didn't want you to sell yourself short.